We will bring the Special Assembly, wow, that's an echo, Special Assembly Committee of the whole work session to order. Mr. Kelly, would you say the land acknowledgement, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klinket land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaska Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of the community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klinket people. Goodness Tish.
Madam Clerk, what do you call it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Steininger?
Here.
Ms. Adkison?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Ms. Wall?
Present.
And for the record, Ms. Hughes Scandies is absent. Madam Mayor?
Here.
You have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? Saint Anne will consider the agenda approved, so we'll go immediately into our agenda topics. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Wilden. I appreciate the opportunity to kick off this very important and informational meeting. I am not going to go through my memo tonight. I know you've all read it. There's a lot of information in this memo. Instead, I would like to take the opportunity to hear from all of the experts that we have invited today. I would like the opportunity for you to ask questions. Please, even if you think you know the answer, ask the questions because there may be members of the public who are looking for that answer. And then at the end of the meeting, I'd like to circle back around. There's a few recommendations in that memo that, you know, we may or may not have covered. So instead of going over my memo line by line, because we have so many invited guests here today, I do want to take a topic just to share my gratitude for all the work that all of our partners have been doing over the last two years to get us to this place. I am very grateful for all of the partners that we have had in this journey, and it's been a tremendous amount of work. So if you don't mind standing when I acknowledge you, I think that would be appropriate. So to start off, our federal partners, I'm grateful for the United States Army Corps of Engineers. You have been so thoughtful and so responsive and so willing to think outside the box. It truly gives me faith in government and faith in our ability to do great things. So we have a here from Army Corps of Engineers, John Regic, Daryl Downing, and John Budnik and Mike Records online. If you guys could stand, I know this is going to be a little bit awkward, but I really, I really think it's important for our community and our assembly to see the faces. There are so many other faces that are helping with this project. There are literally dozens of people from Washington, DC to Pacific Region in Hawaii. I think Director Koch got the text from General Gatz today, who was just, you know, giving his support. So you literally have dozens of people supporting our project behind you in this. I also want to be, give a shout out to National, NRCS, National Resources Conservation Society Service. See, I've used the acronym so much. And their work on solutions for, for View Drive. We know that our friends and neighbors in View Drive have been hammered and suffered more than anyone else in this, in this disaster, this glacial lake outburst flooding. And, you know, I apologize that we talk, we have talked about an all-river solution, and they are absolutely correct. The, this all, this solution that we're working on does not, the, the short-term solution does not include those 18 homeowners and those families. Our enduring solution does, and that's why we need to keep pressing forward on that enduring solution. In the meantime, I just would really want to acknowledge the work of NRCS and Brett Nelson, who will try to join us online today, but he is responding in Western Alaska. So if he's not able to do that, we do have a lot of information from him in our packet. I also want to acknowledge our experts. We really couldn't do this without the University of Alaska, National Weather Service, USGS. And so we have with us Jason Edmondson and Aaron Jacobs, but of course, they both, just stand up so we can see you. They, these, I mean, the science really matters in this, and you're going to hear from them today because you have to make policy decisions based on science. And there is, I can't tell you how many meetings I've been in where I'm like, well, what do the scientists say? Well, what do the scientists say? And it really truly underscores how important your work is for our community. I also would like to thank our CBJ staff, really have been working all hands on deck, round the clock, on this solution. So Director Koch, you have right up here, we have Nate Rumsey, Deputy Director, we have our Chief Engineer, John Bohan. You guys have to stand too, because it's, I'm going to make it awkward for everyone. We have Ryan O'Shaughnessy, who's our Emergency Program Manager in the back there. You can stand because I'm just going to make you. Okay. So of course, we have so many faces behind this that have been working tirelessly. We have our project managers who've been in the field. So just want to acknowledge our CBJ staff. I want to also acknowledge the delegation. We could not do this without the robust support of our federal delegation, Senator Murkowski, Congressman Begich, and Senator Sullivan. You know, Senator Sullivan's staff has been like, well, he's like a dog on a bone on this issue, and I'm just going to tell you he is, and he has been tremendously an advocate for Juneau in this. And, and it has just been really phenomenal to watch. Senator Murkowski's been able to secure us critical funding. Congressman Begich has funding for us in a CDS, if that, if that moves through the process. And then I'd also like to be, just express my gratitude to the residents who have HESCO barriers in their yard, right? They're staring at these big, ugly, green barriers, and I know that that's hard, and I know we're going to be talking today about putting up additional barriers. And finally, but certainly not last, I'd like to express my gratitude to Klinket and Haide. They have been by our side as stewards of this land, not only in our emergency response, where our incident command stood side by side in responding to this emergency, but in every meeting that we've had, traveling to Washington, DC, advocating for all of our, our shared residents and constituents. And it really emphasizes what President Peterson says, in that we are stronger together. So I think tonight, we've got a lot, we really do have a lot to celebrate, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, too, but the Army Corps of Engineers is stepping in where the city and borough of Juneau cannot, in taking on Phase Two. And the Army Corps of Engineers is pushing forward on an enduring solution in an unprecedented manner. So I just want to express my gratitude to all of you, and, you know, let the community know that the city and borough of Juneau stands by ready to support the Army Corps of Engineers and enduring solution. And with that, Mayor Wilden, I think we can hand it over to the experts and begin our learning session.
Thank you for all the thank yous. With that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Edmondson, is that how you say that? And Mr. Jacobs. We're used to Mr. Jacobs, but you're new to us. So we'll just send it to you guys, and hopefully your PowerPoint will come up here shortly. And I believe you want to take questions throughout, correct? Do you want to take questions throughout, or do you want to get questions at the end?
I think at the end might be better.
Okay, we'll do it at the end. Okay.
Thanks for the introduction. Thanks for having us here. I might be new to you, but I've actually been in Juneau since 2011. I moved here shortly after the first flood happened. I didn't realize that, that moving here as a glaciologist that I was going to work on something that has been so impactful to the community, and it's pretty humbling to, to have this experience. I'm going to, I'm going to start off talking about changes in basin volume, how Suicide Basin has changed over the last few years, sort of, sort of taking a big picture look at, at how, how Mendenhall is changing and what sort of impacts that can have on the outburst floods. And then Aaron is going to dive more into the, the, yeah, the flood modeling and sort of the real-time work that we're doing for the next slide. This is really a collaborative effort between the university, the USGS, and the National Weather Service. I just want to point out that this is, Aaron actually is the one who pointed out, this is a three-legged stool, that each of us is doing something really important and distinct. University is focusing a lot on the glacier dynamics and basin evolution. The USGS is dealing with a lot of the monitoring up at Suicide Basin and also on the Mendenhall River. And then the, the Weather Service is, is dealing a lot on the front lines with the forecasting and interfacing with the public. There's a lot of back and forth between these two, so we're not off in our own silos, but just wanted to point out that we have our distinct roles and are collaborating quite closely, meeting quite frequently throughout the year. Okay, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about how the floods work. I think we are all fairly familiar with it, but just to orient us, here's a map of Mendenhall Glacier, and Suicide Basin is indicated there off to the right side of the glacier. You can see the flood pathway marked, and then roughly indicating the flood impact zone on the Mendenhall River, just a box over that area. Suicide Glacier off to the right of Mendenhall, off to the east, was attached to, it was flowing into Mendenhall Glacier until about 20, 25 years ago. It was thinning and eventually detached and separated, and that left behind this basin that now fills up with water each summer and then drains. Go to the next slide. We've seen a tremendous amount of change. This photo is from shortly after the 2011 flood. You can see, you're looking into Suicide Basin, and you see a nice, fairly smooth coverage of glacial ice. You can walk from the Mendenhall Glacier across the moraine onto, onto Suicide Basin. And then if you go to the next slide, this is almost the same vantage point taken this year. The yellow arrow is the same, is pointing at the same rock as in the previous slide. And, okay, yeah, go back to this one. Right, and so the, the red contour is indicating roughly where the water reached this year. The point being that the water level will never reach the same elevation that it did in the past, because the Mendenhall Glacier has been thinning so much. But despite this, the basin storage capacity has been increasing quite tremendously, and the big reason for that is that we're seeing a loss of ice that's in the basin. That was, it was filling space that can now be taken up by water. Go to the next one. So here's just a conceptual diagram of how, of how these floods work, or how they, these basins evolve. 20, 25 years ago, we didn't have a basin that could store water. There were no floods that could form. Eventually, you start to have a basin that forms, you store a little bit of water, and you can have outburst floods occurring. As time goes on, the basin gets bigger. That's what you're seeing here. The black curve is sort of illustrating the, the, yeah, conceptual idea. So as time goes on, the volume of the basin gets bigger, you expect to see bigger floods. At some point in time, this curve changes the other direction, and the floods will start getting smaller over time, and eventually, Mendenhall would retreat past Suicide Basin, and you wouldn't have floods occurring anymore. The red dots are just illustrating the fact that there's a lot of variability from year to year. We don't understand all of that variability. Why some years, the basin fills all the way, and it only drains halfway? Why some years, it fills up halfway and then drains? So there's some basic physics that we don't understand. Go to the next one. One thing that's probably not too surprising is that the peak discharge during the floods, which is on the vertical axis here, is scales with the volume, which is on the horizontal axis. These are all of the floods that we've observed since 2011. Many of them are quite small, so they're ones that most people never would have noticed, except the Weather Service was looking at their river forecasts and realizing that, oh, the Suicide Basin is draining. So a lot of the small ones are ones that no one would have ever noticed. But you do see this relationship, larger volume, you're going to have a higher peak discharge. And so really, the fundamental thing we need to understand is how does that volume change over time? This figure also shows that there is some variability from year to year. It's not just a nice, smooth curve or a straight line, that there's a bit of scatter in the data, and this has to do with things like the state of the subglacial drainage system at the time that the flood occurred, and things like that. All right, so to understand how this storage capacity is changing at present, we need to know a few things. We need to know the shape of the basin. We need to know the ice dam height and how that's changing over time. We need to know where is the location of the ice dam, which can also move. It can, you can have the ice dam sort of retreating up into the glacier a bit. And then we need to know the volume of floating ice. Drone surveys give us all of this information, and it's super useful, and we've done 50 of them now, 50 drone surveys since 2018. I'm, and continue, plan to continue doing these surveys for the foreseeable future. So we get up there five, six, seven times a year, just depending on the year. Next one. I'm going to first show a time series of hillshade DEMs. A DEM is a digital elevation model made from the drone imagery. Think of that as a topographic map. The hillshade is that we take that topographic map and we shine, kind of shine light onto it to give, make it look three-dimensional. And it's really nice, because it has the same shading on all of the images. There's no issues with cloud cover or anything like that, so it makes it really easy to, to step through the DEMs and understand how things are changing. So if we can just go through these, maybe I'll steer for a second here. Again, all right, so this is our time series from this year, June 10th, June 17. You can see the basin is filling up, July 5th, July 14, July 22nd. We were up there shortly before it started to drain, when it was almost full, and then this is what it looked like right after it drained. That's a drop in elevation between, did I go back? Oh, I did. Between these two images, that's a change in elevation of a few hundred feet. So it's a really deep basin. Oh, and then there was the last one, September. Right, so we have that sort of imagery every year since 2018. And as I said, this, this imagery, this data allows us to understand all of these different aspects of how the basin is changing. I'm going to, in a second here, I'm going to go through some numbers. I'm not going to hopefully inundate you with too many numbers, but just for reference, the 2025 flood released 51,000 acre-feet of water, and that's more than 50% of the volume of Mendenhall Lakes. Just to give you some context for what, you know, 51,000 acre-feet, I don't, I don't have a good grasp for what that really is, but if you compare that to Mendenhall Lake, you can start to understand the scope of the basin. Okay. So first, I wanted to show an elevation-volume curve and talk about this a little bit. This is something that is, that we get from the drone data, and it's also really helpful for, for the river forecasting. You're actually even critical. Aaron is, you're going to come back to this in, in his part of the call. So from our digital elevation models, we can come up with a curve that looks like this, that it shows for a certain elevation, how much water is in the basin, right? So as the basin is filling up, the volume is increasing. It's not a straight line, because it has to do with the, the shape of the basin. And so if you, can I even point? Right, so if you're at 1,300 feet water level, you go over to see where it intersects the line, and that tells you that you're at 30-some-thousand acre-feet of water. A few years back, the spillway was just under 1,400 feet. That's the maximum that the basin could fill before it starts to spill over the top, and that gave us a volume of 47,000 acre-feet or something like that. Right, so we're able to construct curves like this, that then, as, as time goes on, each summer, and the basin is filling up, and we have an idea how much water is there, and then the, the River Forecasting Center uses this to, to make projections about what the flood will look like. If, if the basin itself wasn't changing, so if the amount of ice floating in the basin, the icebergs that were there, if that didn't change, and the ice dam location didn't change, all you would see happening is that the spillway would get lower over time as the glacier is thinning. And on this graph, that would look like you're moving down into the left, right? The, the blue curve wouldn't change, your spillway would be at a different elevation, and you'd be able to hold less volume. If instead, the spillway wasn't changing, let's say, Mendenhall, for whatever reason, wasn't thinning, but you were able to melt the icebergs that are in there, you remove how much ice is there, which increases the storage capacity, what happens is the curve shifts to the right. For the same elevation, about just under 1,400 feet, you would have 55, 56,000 acre-feet. What we're experiencing is both things happening, that, that the spillway is getting lower, and also, we're increasing the storage capacity. This curve has continually been shifting to the right. And I'll, so I'll come back to this at the end. Okay, so there's three things then, what we need to know. How much is the ice dam thinning? How much are the icebergs melting? And how much is the ice dam location moving? Here, I'm going to show changes in glacier surface elevation. There's a red line across there. I'm going to show along that transect, and these are one profile per year, from 2020 through 25. The black one is 2020. The glacier is off to the left here, and as you go along the right side here, you're approaching the bedrock. This would be the, the side of Mount Ballard right in here. So black is 2020, and then this progresses through to 2025. We see about 15 to 20 meters of thinning, something like 50 to 60 meters, that the surface has dropped over that time. This reduces the storage capacity of the basin, something like 8,000 to 11,000 acre-feet from 2020 to 25. We can also estimate the iceberg volume from the same time period. We know that when an iceberg is floating, 10% of its volume is above water. That's actually what we're measuring. So we measured the volume above water, and then we can use that to calculate the total iceberg volume, and, and actually, the part that really matters is the part that's underneath the water surface, because that's the part that is picking up space that could be filled with water. From 2020 to 25, we've seen it, the iceberg volume decrease from about 18,000 acre-feet to 6,000. That's 12,000 acre-feet of storage capacity that's gained because of the fact that the icebergs are melting away. And that's really been a major driver of the changes that we've seen. And then from 2020 to 25, this is a little bit hard to tell, but the ice dam is located somewhere, you can see my cursor, somewhere in this area, 2020 on the left, 25 on the right. You don't see a lot of obvious change there. It has retreated a little bit. We estimate maybe something like 6,000 to 7,000 acre-feet of volume that's been gained during that time. This is the hardest part to quantify, and also the hardest part to, to make predictions about. We can expect the icebergs are going to melt away over time, that the glacier is going to thin, but the dynamics of this, of this boundary here is really complicated, and something that's, it's been difficult to observe over time, and it's also been difficult to, to try and make projections about. I have a figure here that shows the amount of thinning that happened between 2020 and 25. I don't have a color bar on there, but just note that this, this color here, this kind of medium red, that's about 15 to 20 meters of thinning. In the area of the ice dam, there's been about 40 meters of thinning. This is because you have a cliff there that is unsupported, for at least part of the year, and so it flows really quickly, causes the, the ice to thin. And so understanding what is happening here is, I think that's the big question mark for a lot of what we're doing at the moment. Anyway, if you take all of this together, we see that from 2020 to 25, we've gained something like 7,000 to 10,000 acre-feet of volume, which is about 20% of the volume of the flood that occurred this past year. So if, you know, at, at that rate, 10,000 more acre-feet, you would expect to have a really big flood, you know, 60,000 acre-feet of volume in five years. I don't, I'm not expecting that, because we've already melted a lot of the icebergs away. There's not a lot of ice left in the basin, and that's really been a big driver of the changes that we've seen. Here's a photo that Mike Records took a month ago, where they, they were up here, or down here, visiting, and were able to, to actually land a helicopter in Suicide Basin and get out and walk around. Nobody had ever been able to do that before. There'd always, always been too much ice in the basin, so they were actually able to get down close. And I like this photo, just because it illustrates that there's really not that much ice left compared to what we had five, 10 years ago. It turns out, these calculations become a lot easier when the basin drains all the way, because now we can actually see the bottom, and, and then the cut, yeah, it's just much easier to calculate, what is the volume there, and how is that volume changing over time? From the last few years, we've had these much bigger floods, which have drained, if not to the bottom, then very close to the bottom. So we have much more confidence in our calculations over the last couple of years. From 24 to 25, the storage capacity increased by 500 acre-feet. If you compare that to the 51,000 acre-feet that we had for the, for the flood this year. Actually, the iceberg volume increased a little bit. There were icebergs caving into the basin, and that outpaced how fast the icebergs were melting away. And so really, over the last year, it's been a competition between basin expansion, potentially deeper drainage, a little bit deeper drainage, not much, and ice dam thinning. And it appears that basin expansion is outpacing thinning by a little bit. And so then, this is, going back to the elevation-volume curves, this dark blue one on the top is from 2023, and the dot is indicating the spillway. And then 24 and 25, you can see the spillway has gotten lower, but that curve has shifted to the right. The, this lightest color is our current projection for 2026. We think it's probably a little bit conservative, in the sense that it might end up shifting a little bit back to the left. It's hard to say at this point, but we are going to be up there next summer, doing surveys throughout the summer, and sort of as the summer goes on, we will, we'll be refining this curve and, and help using this to improve our projections. So based on this, we're looking at something like a 1%, 1% to 3% increase in volume from 25 to 26. Wouldn't expect it to be much bigger than that, but I have no reason to think that the, that the volume, the storage capacity would be less. The other part of this is, what I'm talking about here is just the volume. We've seen some years, the basin doesn't fill up all the way. Some years, it does fill up all the way, but doesn't drain all the way. And then we also know that the rate at which the flood, that the, that the basin drains is not the same from year to year. It's fairly consistent, but there's enough variability that even if the storage capacity gets bigger, you could have a smaller flood, or if it, conversely, if the storage capacity got smaller, you could also have a bigger flood. And so then, kind of going full circle, you know, we're on this trajectory here, where the curves have been shifting to the right, and the spillway is going down. At some point, we expect to see this curve starting to shift the other way, and then the volume, the, the, the storage capacity, potential flood volume, also decreasing. I don't know where we are on this curve yet, which is why there's a question mark, but this is the sort of thing that we're trying to understand. And maybe, you know, once we get a little bit better data for what the flood looks like at the beginning of next summer, we'll see how this light blue curve shifts, if it's going to shift back to the left, or, or stay where it's at. I think from there, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thanks, Jason. So Weather Service uses all this information really critical for us to be able to issue our forecasts and figure out how high the river is going to get. So these curves that we have up here are super, super important, and we work with them to make sure that we add a certain amount, so it's not always the same. And so we knew there was going to be a little bit of an increase in the volume from last year to this year, and through the drone surveys, that helped us to keep track, like, yeah, we're on that 5% increase that we saw the previous year. So the in-season drone imagery is so critical for us to make sure that these estimates are right on mark as best as we can, because it's the water volume, as Jason was saying, is the most important to how high floods will get. So I'm going to quickly kind of go through the forecast, or just the event in August, and then the second event in September, then talking about how we're taking all this information, what we know from what we've seen the last three years of these events, how those, that information is going to help us improve these scenario forecasts that we put out, and also the official forecast that everyone sees through the National Weather Service. Then working with the USGS, we're going to improve the observation program, kind of just go through what, things that we have in store to help make sure that we have constant observations of the conditions within Suicide Basin and along the river. So here's a quick timeline of the event that took place back in August. And so August 10th, 6, 6:00 PM, we started seeing the Suicide Basin, USGS, start over-topping. And so the Weather Service issued a special weather statement recommending that finish those flood protections. We're seeing this indications. But at the same time, fair warning was, we had an atmospheric river going over at the same time. So we had heavy rain, water was rising, and by August 11th, we, there was a mess in this of what was going on. We haven't seen any remote imagery, and the heavy rain really masked that start of the event. And by the time of Tuesday morning, August 12th, we saw some laser data, and we were able to get up there and verify that actually, instead of it over-topping, it was subglacially releasing. And so we issued a flood warning for about 16 and a half, 16.25, 16.75 forecast, with that crest around in between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. And then river caught up to Meyer.
Excuse me, Mr. Jacobs, we've been asked if you would talk into the mic a little bit more.
Okay, sorry. Is that better? But what I have here circled is a real critical place where we didn't really know when it started to go subglacially releasing, when main event was happening. Typically, we have about two days from when we know the subglacial release to when it peaks. And due to that lack of, or the heavy rain not having that information, or just because of the heavy rain, we noticed that by, in the afternoon of August 12th, that the forecast was a little bit off. We had We had to speed it up. And we noticed that it was more the timing and the crest. So we sped up the timing of the crest and issued the same timing, but just sped it up into the morning timeframe. And then crested, we around 2:00, 5:30, sorry, 7:15 in the morning, a new record. And then it went back down to minor, below minor flood stage by the afternoon on the 13th. Now, how do we take care of this heavy rain situation? This is what we call like a dirty hydrograph, something that has rain involved. It's not just pure outburst floodwater within the river gauges. So what we do here, there's this blue line, which is the total storm hydrograph. So everything of the water, the volume from the rain and the volume of the outburst flood. And then we were able to take away that volume and that's this gray line. That is the base flow from the rain runoff that we were seeing. So we subtract that base flow. We can see that if we were on a recession curve. So with the forecast or if the outburst flood happened about 24 hours earlier subglacially, we would have been on this higher track. But since we were on the lower end of that recession curve, it did go over previous record, but it wasn't going to be where it could have been even worse. And so by us being able to separate these hydrographs, we're able to see the contribution of the rain for future forecasts. And with this one, here's three different hydrographs from the last three years. Orange one is from 2023, green one is from 2024, and then the blue one is from this year. And you can kind of see a trend where everything is going a little bit higher, a little bit higher. But you can see the one difference within this blue line was that base flow was much higher than the previous ones. And the volume on the green one was a little bit more because we saw it have more volume like Jason was talking about due to that ice loss. So up here, you can see the acre feet that we were talking about, how much volume came out of the outbursts from Suicide Basin. Then the peak discharge and we're just seeing this gradual increase. So even though it was a previous large outburst floods, half of that increase that we saw for the records was from the higher base flow that we saw from the atmospheric river. And then the other half of that 0.65 above the record was from that added volume that we saw from the changes from year to year. So as Jason was mentioning, we have a really good idea of what this volume is. And the volume is the main driver that is. And you can see that there's some very similarities between these hydrographs. And so we're going to be utilizing those similarities from the hydrographs of the shape and the amount of volume and how much volume goes through our the USGS river gauge. That we're going to be able to improve that in-season or that forecast as we're going around. And so that increased confidence in what we're seeing, because we're seeing these full basin releases. Out of all the releases since 2023, every single one of them, for the most part, has released majority of the volume at the other in the basin. But depending on how much volume was in there each time. So another thing that Jason was mentioning is still a big unknown is just the actual trigger. What is the actual trigger for having the to release, lift up the glacier to have it flow out? So that is a big area that we're still focusing on. But we do have a good idea on the volume that is the most important thing that we can do for being able to forecast. So here was the second outburst flood that we had in September. And again, very similar shape, but in, but didn't get up to moderate flood stage and a similar thing. But what happened here was not a lot of volume in there. But it did release at a quicker rate because of possibly the subglacial drains was very established after the first one. These are some unknowns that we don't know, some hypothesis that we do know. But we know there's some differences between the first releases and the second releases. So that's how we can also improve our forecast. So here's comparing the first releases from, the second releases, excuse me, from 2024 and 2025. And you can see that there is some similarities between the rate of rise and also how much volume was in there. So but last year was a dirty one, this one was a clean one because we didn't have any rain. So we can really see that rate of rise is very similar to previous years. But it was a little bit higher than last year due to that other rain. And so seeing those differences, we can actually see the difference between the first release and second releases on the bottom right. You can see that the orange one is the first release from this year. And then the other two were the low ones. So there's a similarity. I think that's the point of we, there's differences that we're going to change of the way that we're doing our forecast, depending on if it's a first release or second release, to provide better forecasting information to the community. And we were talking about this ice loss and changes within season forecast. There's, we'll have different forecast scenarios based on the fullness of the basin. If it's a first release or second release. And it's improvement in improving based on the accuracy of the physical conditions within the basin, the efficiency of the water from the basin and seeing from these several events. And so we, we only know what we know from the past. And what you're seeing on these graphs to the right is that ice loss that we're seeing in the basin. And right in here, you can see the very kind of bottom. We haven't really seen much lower. And this is on the bottom graph is the in-season addition of the icebergs moving into the basin. And so as Jason was mentioning, these are the complications of being able to forecast. Because not only are we losing ice, but in-season we're actually gaining ice. And so when we have these in-season detections, we can have higher confidence to get on this forecast or on the basin volume. And so as you can see, we're not really expecting much year-to-year lateral expansion, as Jason was saying. So only about like 1 to 2% increase in more volume. But maybe we've hit an overflow channel that may not lower anymore. So those in-season calculations are really important for for the Web Service to keep on track of that volume. And so the observations, you know, we need to keep all the USGS equipment up and running. It's critical that we have that information. If you didn't have that laser information, it would be really like running blind. And so during the event in August, we did lose that laser data at times due to the weather up there. So we're looking at how to make that laser information more redundant, improve the work in all weather and also some other additional cameras. So we can see if that water is going over the overflow channel or if it started to do that subglacial release. Because that is our our big trigger of knowing when to issue that flood warning. And then we're also going to be doing again that in-season drone monitoring to improve those DEM generations, to detect those changes and to verify the preseason storage estimates that we are anticipating. We're anticipating about 3% increase from last year. And so those in-season will help us verify that those additional estimates, like Jason was saying, we might be a little bit conservative. But those in-season estimates will help us with those forecasts. So I think we went a little bit over, but that's what we have. And I guess we'll take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Who has questions? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know Manager Kessler started with gratitude. And I will do this to everyone who comes up, but we, I shudder to think where we would be without everyone who's been part of this. So thank you guys so much for your work. I found it very helpful and I may not have caught all of it. And I know you guys aren't engineers, so, but from the science perspective, you know, we've been talking about enduring solution, short-term solutions. You know, there's this kind of like idea of a midterm solution, which we haven't really talked about. But listening to your presentation, like taking out the engineering, can you thin, you know, would, if you were able to thin the glacier, would that make any difference? And similarly, if you were able to like displace water like the icebergs are doing, could that help? Or is really basin expansion what's driving this at this point? So those things wouldn't make a big difference?
Yeah, I think those things could help if there's a way to to do it. I mean, I guess it's always, that's the engineering question. But certainly, if you could lower the ice dam somehow, if you could dig a trench or somehow melt a lot of ice. I don't know. If we looked at some of the curves, I have to go back and look at the curves. But you can, you know, if you lower the ice dam by 10 feet or 20 feet, you could see how much. It wouldn't make a huge difference. I mean, to, you, you, you could probably cut it off by a few percent, but that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You could do that, but it's just not a lot of bang for your, for your buck. Like, like we're already lowering a couple of percent volume, but we're gaining and losing. So it's that balance in it. And you don't gain that much from just lowering. It's, as Jason was showing, it's a very deep, deep basin.
Quick follow-up. It's less of a bang for a buck because the basin expansion is more important? Or because we're just on a trajectory that is hard to change?
No, I think, I think it's just because it's so narrow and deep that like if you had a really, if you had a shallow lake and you could thin the ice dam by 10 feet, you would remove a lot of volume. But because it's a pretty compact basin and it's, so it's like a tall cylinder or something and you're just cutting off the top. Yeah, so it would certainly make a difference, but it would take, you would have to remove a lot to really get down to the point where the potential flood hazard is not what it is now.
Ms. Aggerson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a feeling I know the answer to this question. But just to be sure, even though we're maybe not expecting huge increases in the capacity, that doesn't mean that the floods will not continue to grow, correct?
The one cat, there's a couple of caveats with that. And that's with this like atmospheric river. When you bring up your base flow and have the same volume or like, that's what it was the premise from the first one was that if we just detached the time by 24 hours, we would have had a 17-foot flood. But if we didn't have that rain at all, it would have been 16.2, 16.3. It would still be a record because of that basin, basin expansion. But so that is the, the unknown, or our luck, I guess, to say, of have, of things happen at the same time with not the right, things not happening at the right time.
Certainly.
Yes, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but it's probably safe to assume that the floods will continue to grow. Yes. That they will be bigger next year than they were the year before. I'm putting you on the spot, sorry.
The volume, the volume will continue to increase up to a point, as Jason was mentioning. The flood, the natural amount of water comes out, the rate of rise, that is unknown, like ahead of time. We know only what we know. So this year was the fastest release that we've seen in the rate of rise. We saw the average Mendenhall flow pass through the gauge every hour. So that's 35 hundredths cubic feet per second. A little less than that went through the gauge every hour. And that's the normal flow for the Mendenhall. We haven't seen that before. That could have been caused from the atmospheric river that helped to increase that whole orifice. So there's a lot of unknowns in the rate of release that dictates how high that flood can be based on the same amount of volume that you can have. And then also that base flow. The base flow is also a big portion of where you're starting the Mendenhall at, when you add a significant amount of volume on top of that.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering if you guys have monitored or looked at any contributing factors as far as like sediment collecting in the basin from, you know, rain runoff or melting ice? Like, has the, the floor of the basin fluctuated at all that has led to results in the outburst?
We actually haven't been able to see the bottom of the basin until recently. So I don't, I mean, I would speculate that there's not a lot of sedimentation or anything like that happening within the basin. But I, we don't have, like, we just haven't been able to actually even see the bottom until the last couple of years. And even then, when I say see the bottom, what we're really seeing is icebergs that are covering up most of the bottom, but they're resting on rock instead of floating there. So it's, it's pretty hard to say like what the bottom actually looks like.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I, this is, I think, at least the second time I've seen you guys. So I appreciate all the, all the public presentations that you've been doing to help kind of inform not just the assembly, but to inform the general public. I am looking here at the kind of the bell curve diagram that you have on, it's page 13 of our packet. It looks kind of has a, has a curve, a bunch of red dots on it. And I'm kind of curious about how useful that is at this point for, for modeling, like maybe where we are on that curve? And if we have, if we can, if we know enough to have some idea of how long we could expect this to continue? Thank you.
That's an excellent question. I don't know where we are on that curve. Of course, this is hypothetical and the time scale intentionally doesn't have specific years. This would vary from glacier to glacier, depending on like how fast the glacier is retreating and thinning. I guess I know we're not down in the bottom left anymore. And we also know that the volume is still increasing. But it, you know, from what happened from last year to this year, it didn't increase that much. So I would assume we're somewhere in the upper half of that rising curve, but I don't know. And certainly, you know, we, you know, this is one thing we're looking at. We're working on not, not only just the drone surveys, but also trying to project that forward and working on starting to develop some glacier flow models that would also help answer that sort of question. I mean, my only concern there is that the, this is a tough problem. Understanding like how that basin, how that ice dam is changing over time is a pretty difficult problem. And by the time we actually have a model that's up and running and that we have a lot of confidence in, I mean, there might already be an engineering solution in place. But just to say that there are people that are working on that aspect of it as well.
Mr. Steiniger, you haven't gone yet. And then we'll have Ms. Wall and then Mr. Brooks. And for the record, Ms. Hughes-Candies has joined us. And if either Ms. Hughes-Candies or Mr. Smith, oh, there is his hand, I see his hand now. So, so first, Mr. Steiniger, then Ms. Wall and Mr. Brooks, and then Mr. Smith.
So you mentioned that this past year, you're looking for it to overtop, but then it released subglacially. Do you have kind of any idea of how much of an impact that type of release has on the, you know, rate at which it releases or any way to kind of predict differently how it's going to release?
Certainly, if it, if it overtops like it was, and that actually eroded a channel that was pretty deep. I don't know if in my images show it, but that, that lowered the water level by 10 or 20 feet, I think. And so that definitely took off some of the volume. The thing that was challenging this year was because it was so hard to observe what was going on up there with the weather. What we didn't realize is that as it, as it was overtopping, it was probably also draining beneath the glacier. And all the rain and stuff that was going in was kind of keeping the basin full. So one, one of our ideas for, for why the flood rose so fast and was so big this year was because, you know, even, even as it started draining, you continued to pour more water into the basin. And this, the way that these channels form is that when you put water through a subglacial channel, it grows, which allows more water to go. And the more wa, the more water that's flowing through, the faster that channel opens. So if you're continually adding water to it as it drains, you could end up with a bigger flood. So that's, that's one of our ideas for what happened this year, why we saw the faster rate of rise in the hydrograph.
And this is the first one that we had as what we said, a dirty one. All the other previous large releases have been clean. So they've been really well to be able to see when it goes from a subglacial release to an overtopping. And we have a, a, a graph, or that we have a table of how many days it goes overtopping before it goes subglacial release. And so we're seeing also if there's a trend in that way, or at least try to give as much information of when we think it could go after these occurrences takes place.
Ms. Wall? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Brooks and then Ms. Wall. Either one. Ms. Wall, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, this is another one that I think you touched on, but didn't pick up the whole thing there. The second release, I think when I heard from you, you don't think it was a coincidence that that happened in 2024 and 2025, that we had a full basin release followed by a smaller release? And maybe talk to me about the, what, what you think the mechanism is? If you do have a theory on why we would get that second partial release? You know, I, I think we've all talked about basin fills, it starts to overflow, it lifts the glacier. Is it, what happens the second time? I realize you might not know the answer, but.
I mean, I don't have an easy answer for that. Certainly, what happens after the big flood is that the, the, the channel collapses. We can actually see that in the time lapse imagery and in the, and in the drone products, that there's a part of the, the ice dam that right after the flood, it just dropped. So we think there was a pretty big tunnel there that closed. And that got sealed, at least temporarily, so then the basin could start to fill again. I don't know why it doesn't fill up all the way the second time. And maybe even though that tunnel collapsed, maybe there's still a little bit of drainage that can occur. And so actually, as the basin is refilling, there's some water that's, that's leaving from the basin at the same time. Eventually, it grows and then the second one releases.
Yeah, it's just really hard to, again, tell that triggering aspect, especially on these. There's a full basin release, but it's just less volume. So it's like not like what we were seeing previously to 2020 and seeing these real partial, smaller releases. releases. But there are similarities between these second releases and from year to year, and we're going to harness that information and be able to provide better forecasts and scenario forecasts going forward. They are...
I just wanted to add one other thing, which is that the things that we're struggling with are not unique to us or to Mendenhall, that, that there's, there's really good theory for how opus floods evolve once they start. But if you look through the literature, it's, what, what is really not clear is kind of this triggering mechanism, and why you have the basin only fill halfway sometimes and only drain halfway sometimes. And this is something that's, it's a kind of a longstanding problem in glaciology.
There are agencies that have reached out to us to find out they can help out with some of these triggering, or find out certain ways that they can see how machine learning or anything like that could actually help us out to have a understanding, better understanding from these triggering aspects from certain things. So there are people reaching out to us.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brooks.
I have just a quick clarifying question with a follow-up. When you're measuring the outburst flow, is that at the riverhead, at the lake, or right at the basin itself?
So the USGS gauge is actually located right behind, by the American flag. That's right around there on the rock, on the left of the rock wall, is actually where the USGS has their lake gauge, and that dictates the water flow going down through the river.
Have you guys looked at any factors as far as the shape, capacity, and subsurface features of the lake changing that might play into the severity of the outburst?
So you're asking about changes in Mendenhall Lake, that can affect the floods, or anything like that?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the lake is filling with sediment. Not, I mean, it's, it's fairly fast sedimentation rates. I don't have numbers in front of me. I would say the volume of Mendenhall Lake hasn't changed probably that dramatically over the last 10 years, but certainly if it starts to fill up, that's going to have an impact on how the floods propagate downstream. I don't know if you...
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Deepest gratitude for your work. I, I just wanted to check, are, are your organizations, you know, the three legs of the stool, are you, you know, do you expect, or do you have, you know, sufficient resources to continue doing this important work, you know, for the next, in the near term, next couple of years or so?
As far as the National Weather Service, we're not going anywhere. We're going to continue to do what we're doing. Got to play for property.
Yeah, at the university, we have a pretty big grant right now from the National Science Foundation. This was the first year of that, and it's a five-year project, so that will keep us going for a while. We, we may have, right now, we have a postdoc working with us who's been super helpful. The funding for him does not go for the full five years, so we may run into that issue, but at least in terms of having some base funding and keeping, keeping the drone surveying going, should be good for several years, so.
I guess I'll just make one comment on that. It's like, again, the National Weather Service cannot do anything that we do without those other two pieces of the stool. And so it's very important, if we want to continue to do what we're doing, to make sure all those three stools are as sturdy as possible.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, and I'll follow up on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a presentation by Professor Hood last fall, right after the flood, and, and that was, you know, people were asking about, are there more basins further up the glacier? And, and then at the end of the presentation, someone asked from the public, you know, what can we do to help, or what, what do you most need? And he, he did say to advocate for funding for research. So, you know, you talked about kind of short-term funding. Do you have the resources to continue studying what, what lies beyond?
Yeah, I guess there's a couple of questions there. So I'll just say, we did a drone, helicopter survey with radar this past fall, just a few weeks ago. A colleague of ours from UAF had this radar hanging from a helicopter, and they basically mowed the lawn, went back and forth across the glacier, have some really great data, and I think we'll have a really nice map of the bottom of the glacier, hopefully in the next few months. And that'll help us identify whether there's other places we need to be worried about. It's still preliminary right now. And then, yeah, certainly the advocacy has helped. I know we got our funding from the National Science Foundation in January, and then when there were all these different cuts happening in the spring, I know that our, our representatives and senators were, were reaching out to the university and making sure that, you know, our, our money wasn't getting touched. And so they were keeping an eye out for us. I know that. We do have some funding coming from the Climate Adaptation Science Center, which is through the USGS. That money has already been given to us. I don't think it's going away, but there is some concern about what's going to happen with those science centers. I think some of the science centers across the country have been shut down, so that could have some negative impacts on us, too, if that happens here in Alaska.
Anything further? So my only question, you show how the rain affects the flood. Can you address how the tide affects the flood?
Tide, okay, great. Question. I'm ready for that, I think. There it is. Yes. Okay, so we, we've heard a lot, questions about tide. We've looked at it extensively. And this is just the data, plain, straight up. So, so here's an example. So the orange is the opus flood. The up and down curve is actually the National Ocean Services tide gauge there. Then you have the Mendenhall pedestrian bridge gauge in the blue, and then the green is the Brotherhood Bridge. And during the non-flood period, or not over a certain stream flow, you see this increase in both at pedestrian bridge and over at the Brotherhood Bridge. But as the flood gets bigger and more flow in the Mendenhall, you really don't see any effect of the tide within the stream flow. And then once you get down the recession curve of the, of the flood, or the mountain flow in the river, now you start seeing some indications of a tidal effect on the stream flow. So what happens is that the tide is actually pushed out, further out towards like the airport because of the force of the water coming downstream. And so even with our inundation maps, those are baked in with a 20-foot-high tide. So if we had a 20-foot tide and had a record opus flood, those would be the estimate of what the inundation would look like. Now, we don't see a 20-foot-high tide until about October. So just keep that in mind, what we see on those inundation maps, and how that affects the flooding, and then how it affects our inundation.
We'll see. No further questions. Again, we thank you for all your help. It certainly has helped our, us in our decisions, and we look forward to continuing to work with you guys and getting more information all the time. So thank you for that. And Madam City Manager, I'll go back to you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite United States Army Corps of Engineers up. They have a few slides. If you could pull those up for them. And they've asked that you ask questions. Each slide is quite topical, so that you ask questions at each slide.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, can we start by introducing yourself? I've met, well, I'd call him Daryl, but Mr. Downey, but I have not met you, Mr. Rajic.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is John Rajic. I'm a civil engineer with the Alaska District, US Army Corps of Engineers. And I'm just thankful...
Madam Mayor?
Do you want to introduce yourself? So while, we also have Mike Records with the Alaska District. He's online. Mike, are you able to introduce yourself?
Hi, folks. Yeah, my name is Mike Records. I'm a hydraulic engineer. Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. I, I lost audio on my end, so I just figured I should check. Wish I could be there with you all tonight. Again, I'm a hydraulic engineer at the Army Corps. I'm the tech lead for the Enduring Solution. And as you all know, I've been part of this since the Army Corps became involved, and I'm committed to being here and seeing this through. So thanks for having me.
All right, and as you guys said, they want questions throughout. Mr. Smith, I can no longer see you, so just raise your hand, and the clerk will let me know.
If we can go to the next slide. And I guess I just want to highlight that there's two basic, or two authorities in funding streams that we're working on. My role here is to brief the, you know, the effort with the technical report, and Daryl's effort is the, you know, the advanced measures, phase two temporary flood, flood protection. So again, I'm a technical report update. So really, our purpose for this technical report is to develop an enduring flood control alternative for the Mendenhall Valley that'll mitigate the effects of these glacial outburst flooding events. At this stage, we've got, we, we just recently brought on an engineering firm, AECom. We awarded a contract with them this week, brought them on, and they're going to be partners and really working on this effort for us. We've got some conceptual alternatives, and, and keep in mind, these are just general descriptions. Right now, we don't have detailed descriptions of where they would be placed or how they would actually function, but we've got five of them that we're going to be working on. One, flood control dam. That would just basically be a structure that would mitigate the, the flood peaks and control that and protect Mendenhall Valley along the Mendenhall River. Our, our second alternative that we're going to be looking at are levee and flood walls, and, and those would be placed, you know, down the sides of, you know, each bank of the, the Mendenhall River. And it would, they would be situated to basically reduce the effects of the outburst flooding. Third bypass channel, so that, that would be increasing the capacity of the Mendenhall River, or, or having a separate channel or adjacent to it to handle these, these peak flow events that we're seeing from the, from the outburst flooding. Our fourth option that we're going to evaluate is a Suicide Basin Lake Tap. So that would be a tunnel system that would essentially reduce the water that's in Suicide Basin, transfer it to Mendenhall Lake, and mitigate the effects of having these outburst floods. And then the fifth option is relocating infrastructure that is within the high-risk flood zones that we're, we're currently seeing now. So I'll kind of pause there to see if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I think I did read the memo you sent to the, to the manager about, about infrastructure relocation. And I just want to be clear, especially for like the listening public, like, some of these are probably, at this point, more viable than others, but it's still kind of worth it to, to look at all the options, if nothing else, to maybe cross things off the list that we're, we're not going to do to explain, like, why this would work, why this wouldn't work. Is, is that kind of an accurate description, if probably simple, simplistic description of your process?
Yeah, so at this point, we have not established our, our criteria that we're going to use to actually rate each alternative. But as far as, yeah, yeah, so at this point, that, that hasn't been established. We are, you know, in the next few months, going to be establishing that and, and making that information available to the public to review and comment on.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so really, we've got three main objectives that we're going to focus on. So, and our target completion for our technical report is going to be in May of 2026. So out of that report is going to come, or will, we plan on developing a preliminary design of the preferred flood control alternative. We're going to prepare a planning-level cost estimate that's going to help everybody understand the financial implications and basically help make informed decisions on the path forward. And then the third element is we're going to complete a draft environmental assessment of that alternative.
Any questions on that? My question would be, so you're trying to limit it, limit it to just one alternative, or could there possibly be two at the same time?
So given the amount of time that we have, we are going to come out of our planning meeting, that's going to happen in December, and, and move forward with one alternative. Now, it could be a combination of several of those items, but with, with the amount of time that we have, we're going to have to come to a consensus and move forward with one alternative to evaluate, to complete the technical report.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The timeline is amazing to see, given how long I imagine these things normally take. So thank you for working as fast as you can. Do you see, you know, what I would hate to happen is speed is our number one priority and safety is impacted, or, but maybe it's okay if public process is impacted to get a safe and speedy, you know, are there trade-offs there to get to this timeline in your understanding, or do you feel like we can take care of all those things in this timeline?
So we are going to try as, as best that we can, given the time that we have, to incorporate all of those concerns from the community. So ultimately, you know, we're, the goal is to reduce the flood risk, you know, within Mendenhall Valley. So our, our goal is to provide a solution.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Brooks?
Out of the options that are up there, it looks like three of them require more infrastructure and building, and then two of them are more so a removal of materials for the bypass channels and the lake tap. Does, is that something that's heavily weighed on as far as timelines and costs, you know, the infrastructure versus just having a bunch of equipment move things?
So, you know, the feasibility of doing it, the cost of construction, and the duration to even get to construction and construct... and the duration to even get to construction and construct it is going to be part of our rating criteria as we're evaluating all the options. So yes, that, that is going to be a part of the decision-making process moving forward.
Okay, go ahead, next slide.
Alright, thank you again, Madam Chair and committee members for allowing us to bring everyone up to speed on what the Corps of Engineers is doing, what we've been doing, and what we're planning to do in the future. So my first slide, I just want to kind of highlight kind of the Public Law 8499 Advanced Measures Authority, kind of how we got to this point. Because it can be very confusing to the, to the general public, to city members, to community members. So the, the United States Army Corps of Engineer, Public Law 8499 Advanced Measures, we do have several criteria that need to be met before we can essentially accept a project from a community. One of the first is, we do have to demonstrate that there is an imminent and unusual threat of flooding. This has been demonstrated over the last several years. The Corps involvement just got started late last year, got more involved earlier this year, and we're going to be more involved moving forward as well. The next is going to be a written request from the governor. So in this case, the state of Alaska, governor has submitted a letter of request to the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers has accepted that request. We recently have request, received an additional request for assistance that was endorsed by the state of Alaska as well. And as of Tuesday, the Corps of Engineers has accepted that request as well. So there will be much more Corps involvement moving forward, specifically on the Phase Two alignment. The other demonstration that we have to evaluate is the, the non, a non-federal sponsor has to have resources committed. The Corps authority here, we are supplemental to all the local community efforts. So we don't necessarily just come in, take over an entire project. Everything starts local, everything ends local. So we're supporting the gaps that have been identified. And that's where we're coming in, in this case, a little bit more than we had been previously. We do have to demonstrate that there is a positive benefit cost ratio. We have done that a number of times over the last few months. And then we also have to execute a cooperative agreement. As of several months ago, there has been one already executed between the city and borough of Juneau and the Army Corps of Engineers, Alaska District. We will have an amended cooperative agreement as well that we will be signing very shortly. Again, that is amended because the Corps will be taking on a more active role for the Phase Two alignment. And probably the, the best news for a local community is this USA support is 100% federally funded. So any Corps assistance, we do not ask for a cost share. We do provide this at 100% federal cost. So some of the support that the Corps has provided to date is back in March of '25, the Corps has provided over 37,000 linear feet of temporary flood barriers to the city and borough of Juneau. That was for the Phase One installation, which I know I was very impressed with the work that everyone has done. I was able to take a look back in about the June timeframe with several of my colleagues. We did take a look after the flood as well. And I do have to commend the Engineering Public Works team on, on the tremendous work that you guys have done for that. We were very impressed with how well it stood up to the flood. Understanding, yes, there was damage, and there are repairs that do need to be made. But the, the temporary flood barriers did what they were supposed to do. So I do want to commend everyone within the community for their efforts to get to that point. We also have provided sandbags, well over 100,000 supersacks, as well as plastic poly sheeting as well. Just recently, again, I got involved in about the June-July timeframe when it was clear that there was additional support needed for the city and borough of Juneau. We were able to procure and send up over 46,000 additional linear feet of temporary flood barriers identified for the Phase Two alignment. Since that time...
It's just getting in line, so keep going, and I'll hold my question.
And even since September '25, there, there has been a lot of changes as well, which is why we're here to bring, bring everyone up to speed. So the upcoming support that the Corps of Engineers is going to be able to provide is specifically on the Phase One alignment. We're here to provide some technical assistance. Again, I was up here several weeks ago with several of my colleagues, several flood response engineers that I've worked with for years to get a better understanding of the impacts of these temporary flood barriers that went through the flood already, and then get a, a better idea of the site conditions for the Phase Two alignment. For the Phase Two alignment, this is where you're going to see a lot more Army Corps of Engineer involvement. So we will be working very closely with the Engineering Public Works team because they have done some, some great work. So we want to understand some of those lessons learned from the local level. We do have a lot of experience ourselves, but the local experience is, is by far better than any experience in a different part of the country. So we're going to be working very, very closely with quite a few folks within the community so we can be as, as successful as your community was during the Phase One installation. And again, on the slide, I did have a little introduction, but we started that. Again, my name's Daryl Downing. I am the Seattle District Public Law 8499 Program Manager, here to support the Alaska District as the project manager for the Phase Two installation.
Alright, we have a couple of questions, so we'll start with Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I realize I didn't start with my gratitude, but again, everyone who shows up here with the Corps on their T-shirts, gotta tell, you guys are just making a huge difference in our community, property, lives, you name it. So thank you for your work and for being here. The, you know, Corps support for Phase Two is, you know, new information for us, incredibly welcome information to us. Is that, is that official? Is that, have all the decisions been made to, to make that happen? That you will be able to help us with Phase Two?
Yes, ma'am, it is official. The only lacking document is a signed amended cooperative agreement, which we do have plans to sign very soon.
Yes, it's excellent news. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll start by also echoing Ms. Wall's gratitude for all the work that you've done. It's been, been a bit, real, a real boon. And we, yeah, we're, we're very grateful for everything you've provided so far. I am curious about what is, and this will probably get covered a little bit later too, but I'm a little curious about what is covered in the 100% fully funded. So I assume that that's going to be installation and, installation of materials. You've already spoken about bringing up more materials. Will that, will that cover maintenance or any other cost as well? Or if you could just expand just a little bit on what that, what that would entail? Thank you.
Sure, yes, sir. So essentially, what is 100% federally funded will be the support to the engineering design for these temporary flood barriers, the procurement of these temporary flood barriers to include, well, again, the, the flood barriers are currently up here, but the materials to fill those, any sort of armament that would need to be placed on the riverbank, any stabilization measures that would, we would need to place to put these temporary flood barriers in place. What is not covered is going to be any sort of outreach the city and borough of Juneau will need to do to secure rights of entry or any permitting requirements for these efforts. Once the Corps installs these measures, they get turned over to the city and borough of Juneau for operations and maintenance, and then removal as well. So that is not part of what the Corps is able to do at this time.
Again, thank you very much, we're all very grateful.
Anything further? Okay, we'll continue on.
And so on my next slide, I just wanted to kind of touch on a little bit of the Phase One alignment, kind of how the Corps is going to be involved, and just kind of, kind of set some of the expectations and a little bit of some of the guidelines of what the Corps will be doing and what the city and borough of Juneau will be doing. So again, you guys did a tremendous job installing these temporary flood barriers. There was some damage that was sustained, a little bit of overtopping in areas. So we have some of our flood response engineers out of our Seattle District that will be helping to provide technical assistance to the staff that are going to be doing some more of the engineering and some of the installation for these. So we, we have already had those folks up here. We are going to be also securing the HESCO experts or the Gabion Basket experts. We do have those as part of our contract to help provide those more detailed questions that may come up as far as site condition, site prep as well. The flood barriers, supersacks, and sandbags are currently on site. My understanding is there is still plenty of those on site. But as things change, we all know they change very quickly. We will be able to evaluate that and make a determination at a later date if additional supplies are needed. The city and borough of Juneau will be responsible for the actual work, the actual construction of fortifying these barriers and any associated armoring that, that may be needed. This will include securing any sort of equipment, material, and labor for these repairs and improvements. If any permitting or rights of entry are needed, that is something the city and borough of Juneau will be responsible for as well. And then...
Questions on the Phase One? What we have left to do? Still quite a bit left to do for us. Alright, Phase Two.
Yes, ma'am. And moving on to Phase Two. So again, this is where the Army Corps of Engineers will be much more involved. So we will be taking a more direct assistance approach. And ultimately, what that means is the Corps will be able to help with the additional design that has already been done for these barriers that have been installed, adjust as needed for the different sections that the Corps will be installing, will be procuring any sort of materials for that, and installing any sort of temporary flood protection measures. This could include site prep, again, for, to make sure these flood barriers are stable, any sort of armoring for the riverbank, so they stay as stable as possible during the flood itself. Again, this support is 100% federal cost. As mentioned earlier, any sort of operations and maintenance would be the responsibility of the city and borough of Juneau, once they are installed. And as we move forward into the upcoming months and into the, the forthcoming 2026 flood, there is other work that we'll be able to work with the Emergency Management Office here in the city and borough of Juneau, as far as identifying any sort of preparation activities, outreach, as far as training for staff members or the general community as a whole, so they can be as prepared as possible for the flood. This could include loaning out pumps to the Engineering Public Works Office, doing some sort of train, training as far as like sandbag type training, and demonstration of how to, uh, sandbag placement is most effective. So those are things that we'll continue to evaluate the need with, with folks here within the community. The city and borough of Juneau will be responsible for, again, all the rights of entry and any necessary permitting, and then essentially establishing the alignment that these barriers will be placed on. Again, the Corps will be placing these temporary barriers, but the alignment is something that we're going to rely very heavily on, on the local community for. And the last topic I wanted to kind of touch on is View Drive. Under this authority, the Corps of Engineers cannot protect individual private landowners. So we have to look at this as a community approach. And based on the Army Corps of Engineers' best professional judgment, these temporary flood barriers are not a, a good solution, a good community solution for this area. There's a variety of different factors, primarily soil stability and seepage issues. We truly understand this is not the news that everyone wants to hear, but this is, again, based on our engineering expertise and Mr. Mike Records' experience working up in, in this area. So again, we do want to reiterate, this is not the best news that we are, are sharing. But again, good, bad news does not get better with age. So we do want to be as upfront as possible with, with everyone in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Attikasen, and then Ms. Wall, and then Mr. Brooks.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Smith. Go ahead, Ms. Attikasen.
Thank you. So one of the things you cite for why the barriers won't work for View Drive is soil stability. I guess, you know, we have had like bank stability issues with other parts of the bank that we've armored. Is it just that, like, the cost would just be so great? Or is it truly just not structurally feasible to stabilize enough to put the barriers around View Drive?
I can go ahead and try, try to answer that the best that I can. So View Drive, it, it's basically a narrow strip of land that's on the inside bend of Menin Hall River. And it's surrounded by Menin Hall River on three sides. So really, and it has the finished floor elevations of the structures that are in that community. There's a, there's a wide range. Some, some of the homes or structures are, have a much higher elevation than others. So for us, when we came in and did a site visit and we're evaluating it, we're focusing on, first, protecting the, the structures that have the lowest finished floor elevation, and then referencing the, the past flood high water marks, and then looking at the models that CBJ has produced. And ultimately, we came to the conclusion that these temporary flood measures that we have, the HESCO barriers, that structure on some portions of that area are just going to be too tall to withstand some of the water pressures that could possibly form and cause issues with the foundation soils. It, it really comes down to, it, it's just beyond the practical limit of the HESCO system without doing any deep foundation preparation. And we've got really confined space in there to where we don't want to confine or reduce the capacity of the river. That in combination with, yeah, certain sections that would require very tall HESCO barriers. And we do acknowledge that there, there are residents, you know, in that community that have deployed HESCO barriers and that have been successful with it. But they, those structures are some of the highest elevations, you know, in that area. And they, they have, you know, the lowest head of water that they're keeping out of their, their lots.
Were you guys just playing at Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, it just takes a second to unmute. I had a question on the pumps. Just so I'm clear, the, the type of pumps available would be to help with water infiltration, you know, seepage, I guess, either through, under, or whatever, from the barriers? Is that, is that the intent of those?
Yes, sir. There are several different types of pumps that the Corps of Engineers has. We have what are called Cristofoli pumps, which are power takeoff or PTO pumps, which do require a tractor to operate. They do push a lot of water out. And then we also have diesel pumps, four, six, and eight-inch pumps. And the intent would be to work with the Engineering Public Works team to identify key locations if there is any sort of infiltration that could be pushed, pushed water outside of the... that could be pushed, pushed water outside of the area inland of these temporary flood barriers. Again, those are determinations that will have to be made later after there's a lot of more evaluation and analysis that goes on. But yes, those pumps are available for the city and borough of Juneau.
Thank you. May I have a quick follow-up?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to ask, are, are those, are similar types of pumps also available to us to use along, you know, Phase One HESCO barrier portions of the river?
Yes, sir. They would be authorized to be used for Phase One and Phase Two alignment purposes.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. And I have another follow-up also about the pumps. Would, I guess, what would their fuel capacity be? Like, would they, I think there might have been some, some issues with this last flooding where some pumps might have, you know, run, run out of fuel that people had in their yards. Like, what would be the, the capacity of these pumps? Like, how long would they be able to continue, you know, be continuous operation?
So I can answer the Cristofoli pumps are essentially tractor operated or tractor-driven. So however long a tractor could operate, that's how long this pump would also be able to operate. For the diesel pumps, I do not have the capacity on the fuel tanks, but that is something that we can get and respond back to you at a later.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
I also want to resonate the sentiment of our gratitude for having you guys be a part of this and helping us out in the community. Understandably, there's a lot of folks on View Drive that have felt left out of the process. And, you know, I know that there's other programs that we're looking at that we'll discuss later as far as buyouts, but earlier in here, you know, as one of the suggestions, there was the relocation of infrastructure. And the plan that does get approved, is there any possibility of that being added in supplementally and being offered to folks that live on View Drive to maybe relocate some of the infrastructure that, so that they can set up new homes somewhere else in the community?
I will start answering that, and we'll turn it over to my colleague, John. So under the Advanced Measures Authority, there are no buyout or relocations that are authorized. We are strictly temporary flood protection and not authorized for, for those types of scenarios, so.
And so right now, we're, we're just authorized to develop a, a technical report. That's what we're funding through there. So we would be providing recommendations or alternatives with the technical report.
Ms. Attikasen.
I've successfully confused myself. So the issue with View Drive in particular is that they're just not eligible for HESCO barriers as a short-term flood solution. Obviously, the enduring solution would protect the homes at flood drive. It is just that in the interim, they will not be protected, and that's a ways off. Is that correct? Have I summarized the problem?
Yes, that is correct.
Ms. Hall, do you have a question?
Another funding question. With the devastating typhoon in Western Alaska, and understandably, you guys are probably involved in that as well, is this impacting your ability to, are you stretched a little thin, or do you have enough resources to meet the needs of our, our state?
Yeah, so currently, we have the resources and the funding that we need to move forward with the technical report.
And then on the Advanced Measures side, we also have the resources and funding needed to move forward. And just for clarification, folks may be familiar with my colleague, Mr. Dan Heller. He is focused on a lot of the Western Alaska response. So that is why I'm going to be much more involved moving forward.
Okay, we have, well, Mr. Records, do you want to add something to the conversation here?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to add on to what John said there about View Drive and the authority for the HESCOs. So maybe this was already clear to everyone, maybe it was just me, but I think that what John was trying to get at, and I'll just repeat, is we recognize that HESCOs did work for a couple residences on View Drive, but as part of the PL-8499 program, it cannot be individual residences. It needs to be the whole community. And once we look at a HESCO solution for the whole View Drive neighborhood, although it may work for individual homeowners due to the concerns that have come up before, soil stability, seepage, and what was described on that slide is pooling, but another way of putting that would be consequences of failure, which is basically means that if the HESCOs on View Drive, a hypothetical HESCO, excuse me, temporary flood barrier on View Drive failed in one location, you would basically be making a lake. It would inundate all of View Drive and all the homes if you had a failure in one location. So even if they're, they have worked in individual locations, as a system for all of View Drive, it would not work. Just to clarify that. Over.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I guess I just want to ask a little bit, I mean, I've heard your response to, you know, viability of HESCOs for the whole View Drive area. Just, just from my information, and I know it's been a, a question of others on View Drive, can you just speak to a, a little bit of the analysis that has been done, you know, to make, to get to your, you know, where, where you are and your determination of the viability there?
You want to take this one, John?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Oh, either way.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was, I was trying to think of kind of like an analogy here, and I think that, you know, this is what Daryl was describing as professional judgment. So I was trying to think of an analogy that would be like equivalent in Southeast Alaska. So what, what came to mind for me was sort of like a mariner, a professional mariner operating in the water. And, you know, you might take a lund out in, off of Douglas, but you're not going to take a lund across Lynn Canal or out into the outer waters in bad conditions. And that's sort of like a professional engineer looking at View Drive and if HESCOs are a possibility. So the things that we're looking at there, when I'm down there, when the team's down there, we've done repeated site visits. We are familiar with the local geology. View Drive basically sits on moraine from the retreat of the Menon Hall Glacier. So that moraine is extremely porous. We know a rough ballpark of how high that barrier would need to be, given like John talked about, that a lot of those homes are so close to the river at all times. We're looking at the hydraulic loading duration. So I'm thinking back during the August 2025 event and how long water was again, how long water was against the HESCOs in Phase One, and then thinking about for View Drive, how that's going to be even a longer period of time. And that's not, as we saw, we already had seepage, and you're going to have an even, if you were to put them on View Drive, you're going to have an even longer period that there'd be loading against them. And, and we look at other flood control efforts that have been done on View Drive. So there were the neighbors that put in the HESCOs, and then there was the person that built the, what I'll call a ring dyke. And we look at the results of that, and we look at how much seepage occurred through that structure. And that ties right back into that substrate, this old moraine material, and how if you did build a HESCO type structure on there, how much seepage you're going to have under that barrier. And then, like I said, again, we look at those consequences of failure, which, again, all compared to Phase One. And, you know, we thought a lot about what if the HESCOs breach at Killwich? What do we do? Where is that water going to go? How is that water going to get out? And we had these fallback solutions. Okay, the water can, we can pull the HESCOs farther downstream so that we're not having pawning. But you look at View Drive, the one way in, one way out, you have a breach. There is no way to act, there's only one access point. There's, you're building, I call it a lake, I think a reservoir is a better word, where you're building a reservoir, potential reservoir with homes in the middle and no way out. So those are all the factors that we look at as professional engineers when we're considering the possibility of HESCOs on View Drive. And, and like everyone has said, we recognize, you know, what a horrible situation this is for these people and how it's, it isn't fair. And, you know, we really see in terms of the solution there, that's that enduring solution, and we're working on that solution. So it's not like we are not considering what they're going through and how we're going to incorporate them. But we recognize that the way to do that is to press forward with the enduring solution that is a solution for the people of View Drive. Over.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Mr. Smith, are you done, or do you have a follow-up? Any further questions? So beside December with design for long-term enduring, I guess you're calling it, solution, what's your timeline for Phase Two? Or good guess at your timeline?
So, yeah, thank you for that, that question, Madam Chair. So right now, again, we just got started very, very soon, or very, very recently. So we're going to be hitting the ground running very soon. We do have an end goal of July 15th. So we will, we will be working with the Engineering Public Works team to kind of pencil out a backward schedule so we can essentially maximize the construction window in the March-April timeframe when weather conditions allow. But at this time, we do not have a detailed schedule for you.
All right, that sounds good. All right, seeing no further questions. Again, you know, speaking on behalf of the Assembly and the community, we cannot express our gratitude at all enough from last fall when there was the brainstorming session in Anchorage to, was it just two weeks ago, Mr. Steininger, Ms. Wall, and I had a meeting with you here. I mean, you guys have just jumped in with both feet and helped us in any way, and been great, great technical advice, but just supportive and cooperative. So again, thank you from the bottom of all our hearts. So appreciate that. We are going to take 10 minutes, and I believe you guys and I have something to sign during that 10-minute break. So 10 minutes, we're... And if you were here for break, you saw a sign, the first addendum to the cooperative agreement between the United States of America and City and Borough of Geno for Advanced Measures Assistance, which basically means the Army Corps is going to do phase two and pay for it. So we truly appreciate the assistance and as Ms. Atkinson says, there's no take backs. So, and Ms. Kestner did it, but I want to say too, we also have representatives of the, our federal delegation and all three of them have been nothing but helpful. So they've secured funding. They've applied lots of pressure to folks back in DC and we could not have done any of this without them. And also kudos to the governor who has been beside us this whole time with this situation. So with that, we'll go to you, Madam Manager. Who is next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we do have Brett Nelson from NRCS available online. As we mentioned, he, he's deployed to Western Alaska to help that emergency there. But he has a presentation in the packet for you and is here to answer questions about the Emergency Watershed Protection Program buyout. We've been pursuing that with, pursuing that as an option for the View Drive properties. So I would hand it over to Mr. Nelson if you can pull him over, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Nelson. We appreciate you coming in when we know you're busy in Western Alaska. So thank you for your time tonight. Anytime you're ready.
Okay, I think I'm in. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you.
Okay, very good. Um, as folks mentioned, my name is Brett Nelson. I'm the State Conservation Engineer for U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service here in Alaska. That's kind of the new name. Well, it's not new anymore. They changed it about 30 years ago. We're the Soil Conservation Service by historically, that's what you would have known the agency as. But anyhow, I'm out in the Cuscoquan Delta right now, working on typhoon response. But thank you for the invitation to participate tonight. We do manage the Emergency Watershed Protection Program for private property across the country. You'll hear me just abbreviate that as EWP kind of through the, the discussion here tonight. See, can you guys, you guys have the presentation there in front of you?
We will be having it up on the screen momentarily. We do have packets.
Okay. So. CBJ folks. Perfect. I see it pop up on the screen. Right, jump to the next slide, please. All right. So the EWP program is a disaster recovery program, not disaster response, but disaster recovery. And as I mentioned, for, for use on, on private lands. And by private lands, I guess I should clarify that by for use on non-federal lands is maybe a better way to put it. I've been in communication with, with CBJ folks for several months about this program and how it might be used in different regards related to the flood response. And most recently, the request we received for assistance was for potential buyout assistance in the View Drive area because it was proving difficult to come up with a viable alternative for that area. And the HESCO barriers weren't working as a temporary measure or wouldn't work as a temporary measure. So the EWP program is something. Typically, the, the cost share rate on, on this program is 75% federal, 25% local. In what they call limited resource communities, and that is a very difficult bar to hit in this program. The definition of limited resource in, in this program is the local housing values in the county or the city need to be less than 75% of the state average housing values. The local unemployment rate needs to be at least double the national unemployment rate. And the per capita income locally needs to be less than 75% of the national average per capita income. So you can see that for purposes of this program, limited resources is a really difficult bar to hit. Limited resource communities do get the benefit of 90% federal cost share versus 10% local. And I, I mentioned this now because this will, this will become part of the, the presentation a little bit later. So anyhow, CBJ requested assistance through EWP. NRCS evaluated the situation. We did determine that a buyout project on View Drive would be an eligible EWP project. Our national headquarters agreed with that assessment and accepted our, our eligibility determination. And as of August 28th, when the project was officially declared, determined to be eligible, funding was then made available for the project. We made the determination to request that funding be held and not sent until after the first of October. Had the funding been sent in August, they wanted it obligated no later than the end of September. And in, in discussions with some folks there at CBJ, we knew number one, it was going to be borderline impossible to have the funds obligated that quickly. Plus, folks just want a little more time to absorb exactly what, what all the ramifications of this project might be. So this, this bought a little bit of time to mull things over. Of course, now with the federal shutdown, that's delaying things even further. But once the federal government opens back up, I do anticipate, assuming that funding is available in the national program account, that funding will be coming to Alaska probably within a month or so of the government reopening. So. A buyout project. I want to just emphasize that it's a little bit more than just the buyout of individual properties. There are several components to this. There's appraisals. There's environmental due diligence. There's the actual purchase of the properties. There's demolition of the structures. There's site restoration. You can kind of imagine that that's a pretty good synopsis of the, the eligible aspects of a buyout project. Any properties that participate, and I should emphasize this would be, this would strictly be a voluntary participation on the part of the homeowners. Nobody is required to participate, nor can they be required to participate through EWP. It's strictly voluntary. Any properties that did participate and that were ultimately bought out, they would be, need to be deed restricted in perpetuity. And that mean, that deed restriction language, draft language does exist for the deed restriction that would need to be applied. And it basically prevents any structural works of improvement on that property. The most, one of the most common uses of the buyout type project is exactly what we're seeing in Juneau right now, where some structures and properties might need to be bought out to make room for a long-term solution. Or where some properties might need to be bought out because they simply can't, they don't fit within the coverage of, of a longer term solution. Roughly total project cost for buyout along View Drive is about $25 million. That is just an estimate. And that estimate, I do want to emphasize, that would assume that 100% participation, which I would, I think we all can recognize as, you know, most, that's probably not super likely to happen. So in my mind, at least, I kind of view the 25 million total project cost as an, an upper bound of, of likely project expenses. EWP, the EWP program is a reimbursement program. So. If this project were to move forward, it would be basically managed by CBJ as a project sponsor. And the project would be managed and, and implemented in accordance with the, the terms of the cooperative agreement established for the project. One of the things you'll see in that cooperative agreement is EWP is a reimbursement program. So we don't front, EWP typically does not front money. The sponsors front the money and then get reimbursed. Now, because of the expense of the actual purchase price of the properties, there is the potential that there can be advances for the actual purchase price. The rest of the project expenses cannot be advanced, but the purchase price of the participating properties likely can be. So that's, that's an important point. Timeframe. Once the, the funds are received, which again, I anticipate being about probably a month after the, the federal shutdown ends. Then the clock starts ticking and per program rules, there's 200, we have 220 days to complete the project. It's, it's recognized that a buyout project such as this, due to some of the legal requirements, 220 days is not really possible, or at least not possible in most situations. So I have gotten confirmation from DC that they would recognize that something more along the lines of one year to complete the project would be what we'd be aiming for. But we would definitely like to see a goal of having participating properties acquired before the 2026 outburst flood to at least take that pressure off of the participating homeowners. So, um, jump back to slide three for me, if you would. When I use the word timeline, I, I skipped you ahead just a little bit on me. Sorry about that. Back one more. And one more, yeah. There we go. So we already discussed project match. Because City and Borough of Juneau is not a limited resource sponsor, cost share rate would be 75-25. There may be additional project costs and those are, are not eligible for federal cost share. Those are typically things like permitting, operation and maintenance, similar things to what you saw in the core presentation earlier. It's, it's similar across the federal government on that. But those, those costs would be borne by the sponsor. And not only would they be borne by the sponsor, but they wouldn't count as part of the 25% either. They're just a standalone sponsor responsibility. In the scheme of things, those are not huge expenses compared to the, the eligible project expenses on a buyout project such as this, but they, they do exist. How might the sponsors source their 25% cost share? Well, there are very few restrictions on that, where that funding may come from. But the only restriction from my end is the 25% cannot be from another federal source unless that other federal source comes with congressional language specifically indicating that it can be used as a, as a match for federal dollars. Okay, next slide. Match waiver. So there is an element in the EWP program that allows the waiver of any EWP program rules, and that includes the 25% local cost share. This flexibility exists. I'll say this, it is not very often used. But CBJ is certainly certainly allowed to request a waiver of any of the EWP program rules, including the local cost share. This is part of why I went into detail about the limited resource communities earlier because I know there's some interest at CBJ in potentially requesting a waiver of the 25% local cost share. I'm not the decision maker on that. That would go to our national headquarters where they would rule on that. But I did want to emphasize for a community that meets that high bar of limited resource, that's the bar it takes to get to a 90-10 cost share rate. So while we can request a waiver to the, the local cost share, I just want everybody's expectations to be realistic. And I'm not trying to say it won't be approved. I, I have, I really don't have a dog in that fight. I have no say in the matter. If a request for a waiver is submitted to my boss and I, we will then put a cover letter. um, attached to that and send it up to DC for a ruling. And this would all be done ideally before we develop the project agreement. We do have a draft project agreement developed right now. But obviously before we finalize that project agreement, you folks would want to know, if you're going to request a waiver, you'd want to know if it's approved or not. And we'd want to know also, so that we don't have to go back and redo the project agreement. So if you were going to pursue this waiver request, it's something that should be done sooner rather than later. Again, I'm not in control of approval or disapproval of the waiver. Um, but I do think that, uh, once the government has opened up, I, I think we'd see a ruling on a waiver request relatively quickly. If I had to say a timeframe, I'd say probably within a week or so, but, uh, I can't make any promises because it is beyond my control. If you do request the waiver, one of the things that explicitly has to be in the request is we need to, we need to state why approval of the waiver is in the best interest of the federal government. So if you're thinking about requesting the waiver, think along those lines and, and try and emphasize why this would be in the best interest of the federal government. Next slide, please. Okay. Obviously, the number one question everybody has when you're buying and selling property is what is the price? Certainly when we've met with, uh, View Drive residents, uh, earlier this summer in July, that was a, a big question on their minds. The EWP program allows us two options, and the final decision is made by the Alaska State Conservationist, my supervisor. Um, but we are definitely interested in hearing the wishes or the thoughts of the sponsor, CBJ. Um, if they have thoughts on this. The two options for how to, uh, perform the appraisals is the current approved EWP project was based on the 2024 glacial outburst flood. So the property appraisals can either be as of the day before the 2024 flood, or they can be as of the day the appraisal is completed. The catch is all participating properties have to use the same methodology. They either all have to be the day before the 2024 outburst flood, or they all have to be the day of the, the appraisal, like current value. Obviously, depending on which properties participate, some benefit more one way or the other. I can tell you at the moment, my boss feels that, uh, most likely we're, we're leaning towards requiring that the appraisals be as of the day before the 2024 outburst flood. Um, but again, we are interested in hearing, um, the opinion of CBJ. If you have thoughts on the issue. The appraisal process is in accordance, that, that'll all be done in accordance with an appraisal specification that'll be incorporated into the cooperative agreement. The big aspects of, of the appraisal process are going to be that it has to be in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act and in accordance with, uh, USPAP, um, appraisal procedures. To develop the $25 million cost estimate, I can tell you, some of you probably have questions about where that came from. We used Zillow estimates, um, for the value of each of the properties as of July of, uh, it might've been August, actually, of August of 2025. So is, is that the appropriate thing to do? And we can argue that all day long. That's, that's a big chunk of where that $25 million comes from. That's not necessarily exactly reflective of what the appraisal process might come back at, but we thought it was probably the best approximation we could have for now. Next slide, please. Okay, as I mentioned at the start, homeowner participation in the program is voluntary. There are, I think there's 18 home, 20 properties, 18 of which have structures on them in, in the View Drive area. They don't all have to participate. There is no like set minimum participation in order to constitute a project. However, the final project does have to have like a, a defensible, achievable intended purpose. And so I think we've got some flexibility on that in this. I, I only wanted to mention this on the record because I think this would be unlikely to happen. But let's just say three or four of the properties that are sitting at the very highest elevation. If, if they were to say they wanted to participate, but all the rest of the View Drive properties didn't want to participate, that might be a tough sell as to the defensibility about why we would do that. But it's not that, the whole community does not have to choose to participate. It is voluntary. In theory, it could be if, if just one, just the, the most affected property opted in or, or three or five. That could constitute a viable project. Next slide. Properties without structures on them currently are ineligible for the buyout unless they meet all four of the following listed criteria, and I won't read those out to you. I, I do mention this because again, there are two parcels on View Drive that do not have structures on them. I have, we have not evaluated whether or not those two properties would meet all four of these criteria, and I, I would say likely a determination on that would depend on how many and which of the 18 properties with structures were participating, um, as to whether or not the, the vacant properties would be eligible. Next slide. Okay. Estimated timeline. We talked about this, um, a little bit already. Again, the project has been determined eligible. Um, it's in the queue for funding. Anticipate funding in the relatively near future shortly after the shutdown ends. Once we get the funding in hand, um, there's going to be a push to finalize the project agreement. Again, we have developed the initial draft of that and I have sent it to CBJ. So you've got something in front of you to, to look at there. Certainly if there are aspects of that that are problematic from your end, we'd like to hear about that. And we can take it up with national headquarters about, um, whether that's an area we can negotiate on or whether it's not. Timelines and deadlines for the sponsor. This is a question I've gotten a lot. And there aren't any hard and fast program deadlines, like you have to do this. Uh, well, not of what we're talking about right now. Um, you do have to request assistance within 60 days of the disaster, some things like that. Um, but as far as like, when do we have to have this project agreement signed? Well, there isn't a, a drop dead date. Um, all I can tell you is DC will be putting pressure on myself and my boss, reminding us that this is an emergency program. And we wouldn't be pushing CBJ to like short circuit your, your processes. But we would expect that there be continuous forward progress and, and due diligence and recognition of the emergency nature of the, the project. So things don't just languish for, for weeks or months and, and drag timeframes out. One other question you'll see towards the bottom of the slide that I have gotten is does the sponsor have to have their 25% funds like available in cash and like locked away in an escrow account? Um, and if so, at what point does that have to happen? No, you don't have to have that. We don't check that. If we get to that stage, simply by signing the project agreement, you'd be indicating that you're, you're willing to participate and sponsor the project. And that would include coming up with your 25%, but that's not all needed right away upfront. It, it, it's, it's needed kind of throughout the process and we just trust that, uh, you have the money available, um, at the time that it's needed. But that's not something that we, we check. Next slide. So where do we go from here? Right now, we're actually really interested in hearing if, uh, if CBJ is interested in proceeding with this project. Um, with finalizing and, and, uh, signing the project agreement. And, or what additional information might CBJ need about the EWP buyout program in order to make an informed decision about participation? I can tell you, one other question I got after we developed this short little PowerPoint is, uh, you know, at, at what point is the sponsor bound to, at, at what point is there no turning back? And that's a really hard question to answer. Technically, there's no requirements in the EWP program. There's, there's, there's no specific, like, once you do this, there's, there's no turning back. I would say this, to a large degree, it depends on, on why. Obviously, we've had, we've, I've seen projects before where everything's moving forward great. Full anticipation that everybody's going to follow through. And then some catastrophic event happens and it's like, look, we just had this happen. The $6 million that we had for our shit, like this no longer exists, um, because we had this other disaster. We just need to politely bow out. Certainly we would understand that. We can work with that. Um, not on the flip side, to sign the project agreement and say you're going to move forward and then, um, you know, six months down the road, once we, you know, start getting neck deep in the work to just for, for basically no reason to say, ah, I think we've changed our minds. We're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna beg off. That would be, I'm not saying you can't do that, um, but that would be a little more difficult pill to swallow. So I guess I just mentioned that to let you know that we're not here, we don't want you to feel cornered. We're here to help CBJ complete this project if CBJ decides they want to proceed with this buyout project. But we don't want, we don't want you to feel compelled, um, or cornered or anything like that. That's not the purpose. We're, we're simply here to help you. Nothing more. And I guess with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Wall. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Nelson, for being here. I had the pleasure of working with NRCS for about 10 years and what I really appreciated about them, and you're demonstrating that tonight is, you know, a lot of flexibility and, you know, to be solutions oriented. The other thing, and I never worked on this program, but the other thing I remembered while working with them is, you know, a lot of the projects that they did on non-federal lands were, you know, big partnerships. They were private for-profit landowners, individual landowners, nonprofit landowners, counties, states, cities, coming together to, to, you know, figure out solutions to these problems. I, I think we will probably, you know, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't apply for an exemption, but if we didn't get it and our taxpayers say we don't want you to spend that money, CBJ, we, we can, there can be other sponsors of those projects. We could, you know, be part of a larger initiative of home, you know, homeowners associations or local nonprofits or national nonprofits or there are other ways to come up with the money if the taxpayers aren't interested in fronting the money. Is that, maybe you can provide some examples if that is true?
Yeah, actually, um, I, I don't have any specific examples, uh, right in front of me right now, but yes, I can, I can tell you this, that that's absolutely true. And that's very common, um, across the country. I would say most commonly, yes, the, the main sponsor or the single sponsor does come up with the, the, the local cost share, but it is certainly not unheard of, um, for the project sponsor to do a side agreement of their own with, with some other entity and say, hey, you know, you know, can you provide us with a million bucks of this? Um, and can you provide us with some, um, and to cobble together kind of like a coalition that way? Ultimately, in this particular situation, as of right now, it's just CBJ that's the sponsor. But that doesn't mean that you can't have side arrangements with, with other folks. We can also bring on other entities right now. That has to be before the agreement gets signed as formal project sponsors, if you want, or if you find somebody willing. And then of course, then we would, you know, they would become jointly responsible for the local match with CBJ. That's also an option.
We have Mr. Brooks and then Mr. Smith. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How long would it add to the timeframe, uh, going for the waiver application? And then, I, I guess that's the main question. It's just like, how, how much time does it add to the whole process?
Um, I don't think it adds much time at all. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I can't, I can't swear to anything because I'm not in control, but ultimately, you know, if, if CBJ were to, over the next week or so, develop a, a waiver request and send it, it would just be a matter of a day or two for my boss and I to review it and, uh, add a cover letter to that and send it to DC. And then I would anticipate they'd rule on it within about a week. They may not rule on it until after the shutdown ends, but I, I'm assuming this is coming to an end too. But they may rule on it quicker than that because again, this is an emergency program. And so, um, the, that's, that's the reason I'm actually working right now is because I'm on, I'm allowed to work on EWP because of its emergency nature. Otherwise I'd be out on furlough. So I, I guess the short answer to your question is, I don't think requesting a waiver would add much time at all, and I don't think it's a lot of effort on anybody's part, so it's probably worth a try. I just, I just want everybody to be realistic about the chances.
Mr. Brooks, follow up?
If we, thank you very much for the answer. If we were to seek out some sort of partner in it, would we need to do that before applying for the waiver as well?
No. You would not need to. You could seek out a partner either before applying for the waiver or after.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, so say we move forward with this, it's funded, anyway, it gets to all these steps. When, when do participating landowners have, when do they, when do they decide when to opt in or out?
That would be, that would be kind of a, excuse me, a two-step process. So like, right after we sign the project agreement, both CBJ and NRCS, like, okay, we, we're gonna, this project's a go. We've got the money, let's go. Step number one is, would be for CBJ to send out a letter of interest to all the potential participants. And we've got a draft of a letter that's used for that, that we would share with CBJ. And then any of the homeowners that are interested, simply, you know, respond to that, like, yes, we're potentially interested. Then we go to step two, which is environmental due diligence and appraisals. And once those appraisals are completed, now each property owner would get the benefit of knowing what their property appraised at. And at that, sometime after that point is when they would have to firmly commit like, okay, I'm good with that price. Let's, I'm, I'm in. And then there's no backing out for them at that point. Let's, I'm, I'm in. And then there's no backing out for them at that point. Um, so it's, but it's, they do get the benefit of seeing the results of the appraisal before making that decision. Absolutely.
Any follow-up, Mr. Smith?
I guess it, somewhat related. Just say we go through with this, work is being done, and then either no one opts in or like maybe the example you said, you know, three people who are at the highest point opt in and no one else does. Who, where do the funds for that, you know, the, that work being done, who, who pays?
Yeah, so like the, the appraisal costs, things, those are all eligible project costs. And, and so we'd be paying 75% of that cost and the sponsors would be paying 25% of that cost. But you're right, even if, if something weird happened and all the property owners said, oh, I guess I'm not going to participate, then it's not that we don't leave you stuck with the bill for those appraisals. Um, just because none of them follow through. That's still, we still pay 75% of that, and that, that'll all be spelled out in the project agreement. Absolutely.
Okay, we have several people. Mr. Steininger, then Mr. Kelly, and then we'll come back to Mr. Brooks. Mr. Steininger.
Thank you. Um, seeing about the problem that we have with View Drive, it's primarily that, you know, our interim, you know, short-term solutions don't work in that neighborhood. But there's potential that some of our enduring solutions might. My understanding on this buyout is that it's, you know, really irrevocable. So if 10, 15 years down the road, glacier melts enough that that basin is no longer an issue, or our enduring solution solves the problem for View Drive. If we have, say, half or all of View Drive, take the buyout option, there's no option ever in the future for us to reassess and go back to turning that into a neighborhood. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any, any of the individual properties that participated would have a deed restriction on them in perpetuity. Now, I, I'm not an attorney. I, I don't know if there's any sort of wiggle room on that, but my understanding is there's not.
I'm gonna jump in on that question because it's part of that question, except for if we needed that property for future flood fighting structure. Is that correct?
E- yes, um, there, there would be some allowable uses, obviously. Um, you know, trails is, is a common one. Um, um, as long as they're non-paved, things like that. But, but you're right, like, if, if something were to come up and like, hey, to protect the community, we're gonna have to, we gotta, we gotta put a dike through here. Yes, that, that should be something that would be allowed per terms of the deed restriction. Now, another question that we sometimes get is, well, we'd like to use these deed restricted properties as like a temporary gravel stockpile. The whole material, like, no, no, that, that, I have seen them rule on that, and that will not fly.
Okay, thanks for that. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I was gonna ask a different question, um, so I think I'll get back in line for that question. And first, uh, follow-up to, uh, Mr. Steininger's question. Um, earlier in the slide deck, you mentioned, um, I suggested that it would be, that there was a process for appealing any of the rules, including the 25% uh, match. Given that this is a unique circumstance, like this problem could be mitigated if a long-term solution, uh, when a long-term solution comes along, is this one of the considerations that, um, would be eligible for, uh, for a waiver, for a rule waiver?
So I'll say this, that's beyond my purview, but yes, I think you're, if, if, if I was in your shoes, that's, that's the train of thought I would use in trying to, to write my request that, um, there, the compelling federal interest here might, like, these are properties that are getting flooded every year. Not one every 10 or one every, they're going to be flooded every year for the foreseeable future. That has costs associated with it. Um, and will that carry the day to get the waiver approved? I don't know, but I, th- that's certainly seems like a, a course of action to me to at least try.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have, uh, Mr. Brooks and Ms. Wall. Mr. Brooks?
I'll remove my question. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This may to, may to be outside your purview. You know, you, we talked about timeline and you, you kind of, I think my takeaway was like, there's no real kind of rules on when we need to do this by. But I will be honest that I was not expecting things to move potentially as quickly as you laid out they could here. And I'm not used to the federal government working faster than our local government, but I imagine the conversations here are gonna take a while to come, um, to an agreement, knowing kind of the complexity of this issue and, and great uncertainty about what the future of the GLOF is, um, here in Juneau. Is there a political reason not, not to wait? Like, you know, is there money right now that may go away in the future? Or pressure right now that might go away in the future for us to move forward with this? Soon, you were talking about weeks and months and, uh, that was a lot faster than I was expecting.
Yeah, fair enough. Uh, we get that comment a lot, actually. That's, that's one of the, one of the things that most local governments really love about the EWP program compared to most federal programs is it can be quick compared to most federal actions. Um, but you're not wrong. Quick is a double-edged sword sometimes. Um, so lost my train of thought there for a second. Um, we, when I say there's no specific deadline, um, I'll use like extreme examples here. Um, you know, we're not gonna say that we absolutely positively have to have a decision by CBJ by November 5th, you know, or the project's over. We're, you know, we're not gonna put you in that kind of position. That's unreasonable. Um, on the flip side, we're not gonna give you until next July to make a decision. Um, now, where do we fall in between those two bounds? Well, a- a- again, that's what I was saying earlier is all we, we ask, just remember that this is an emergency program, and we'd like to move as expeditiously as possible. But we also don't want some, we don't want to push somebody into making a decision quicker than they're ready to. Um, we don't, we don't want that. That doesn't serve anybody's purpose. Um, as far as the money goes, um, this program is funded by supplemental appropriations from Congress. I can tell you, before we went on shutdown, they did indicate that they were running low on funds nationally. Now, what do they mean by running low? It, they certainly weren't out of money. And how much has gone out the door? Well, the shutdown's been going on. My guess is not a lot. But there have, there, you know, um, I know not much has gone for Ty- Typhoon Halong because that would have come through me if, if that happened. So we haven't spent any of that money yet. Um, I don't know what's happened around the rest of the country. So as far as, do you need to move quick in order to get money that's available right now? I would say this, like, don't, don't think along those lines. You take the time you need to make an informed decision. And then if there's money available at that time, we get the money. If there's not money available at that time, we simply go on the waitlist. And then when Congress appropriates, does the next supplemental appropriation, then they'll fund the projects off the waitlist. And I can tell you this, like, 20-plus years ago, there often used to be waitlists and they'd sometimes last for like six to 12 months. Um, we haven't had a waitlist in this program more than like a week or two for at least the last 10, probably closer to 20 years. Um, Congress typically keeps the program funded. So I wouldn't, I can't make any promises, but I don't think I'd get too worried about that.
That was really helpful. Thank you.
Any further questions? I just have a quick one. So you talked about appraisals. Can we use assessments instead of appraisals?
No.
Okay.
Um, there is specific language in the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act that requires that we do an appraisal and we do it by an approved process. Um, so that the affected homeowners get to know the true and full value of their home. Now, that's not to say that there isn't latitude to make an offer that is not the same as that appraisal. But the law is clear, we have to let them know what the appraisal is. If they, if they choose to sell voluntarily at something less than appraised value, that is something that likely can be allowed. Um, but we can't force, like, we're only paying 75% of appraised value, and, and this is what it is. We can't, we can't do that.
So the reason I'm asking is, you know, I own a house and I haven't had it appraised in 20 years. So I don't know if other people have it appraised. So how do you work around that? That people haven't house appraised in a long time, probably, if they own their property from any stretch of time?
Yeah, so the, these appraisals would all be done as part of this project. So it would, it would, the appraisals would be done, um, shortly after we sign the project agreement. People would get to know the true and full value of their home either the day preceding the 2024 GLOF or the current day. Um, I can tell you, we did do just a quick check, um, when we were trying to decide how to cost estimate this project a little bit. When I told you we used Zillow estimates. Um, it, from just a cursory look, um, it looks like Juneau is really no different than most of the other communities that I'm used to in that the assessed value of most of those properties is somewhat less than the, the Zillow estimate.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further? Well, appreciate you taking the time for, with us tonight. I'm sure you're exhausted, so, and we kept you up late. So again, we appreciate, uh, you being here. Um, I don't think anybody's ready to commit to anything tonight, but, uh, we'll follow up with any questions that we have for you. Again, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, and thanks for the invite.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Welton. I'd like to bring us back to the, uh, memo that is included in your packet. And on page three, I have, um, just a series of questions that it would be helpful for us to get recommendation, uh, get input from the body on. I will say that outside of moving forward with Army Corps of Engineers to build out a Phase Two, which I think we can check off of our list as, uh, a, um, resounding yes. Um, you know, if you don't, if you don't, you don't make decisions on these items tonight, um, I will just bring them back to you. Um, so no- nothing in this needs to be finalized tonight. But it, uh, would be useful. Um, I, in the memo, we talk about holding the Phase One LID open for another GLOF season. And we, uh, make an argument for that, or I make an argument for that, uh, because there are, um, outstanding expenditures with having to go higher, uh, that will be CBJ a responsibility. There's also, um, savings that we've received from the grant from Clinkin-Haida and the assistance from DEC. And figuring out how to apply those savings to the homeowners is really difficult to do without the full picture of the costs. Um, I think another argument for holding that LID open is, um, in the future, the, the assembly may want to explore other area, other mechanisms for, um, for sharing in that, uh, in the cost, overall cost to the community of flood mitigation. Um, so the memo does talk about a special, uh, tax district as still being on the table, even though there was the mill rate cap, because, because the language in the ballot initiative does allow for the voters to approve an increase in that mill rate cap. So in this instance, the voters would be required to approve, voters in the affected area would be required to approve it. Um, so, so keeping that LID open, the pros are it allows, you know, we're getting all these changing variables, right? We're getting different funding, we're having different scenarios. Every GLOF brings, uh, a whole new host of, uh, opportunities and threats to our community. And so, um, just holding that open, I think, would allow us to, um, respond more comprehensively to, to all of that. On the flip side, of course, these are assessments that are not reported with the title company. So it's the property owner's responsibility to disclose that when selling. You could end up with a property who purchases a home, doesn't know that there's an assess, a pen, uh, a, a future assessment on it. That recourse would be with seller of the home for, uh, not disclosing that. So again, I don't need a final decision on this, but I just wanted to, uh, give that for you to chew on. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that before, um, moving on.
Anybody have any questions on that? Is the body ready to, um, decide on that tonight, whether we hold it open or not? I'm getting a couple nods. So Ms. Wall, would you give me a motion?
Sure. Um, I move, we hold Phase One LID open for another GLOF season. If I could speak to my motion.
Well, before you speak to it, can we, is there any objection? Mr. Brooks? Do you have to have your mic on when you say that?
Uh, just an objection.
Okay.
No question or anything?
Uh, Ms. Wall, would you want to speak to your motion?
Um, sure. I'll, I'll say that I, um, did get the benefit of, of chewing on this and talking to staff about this one. And so, um, I recognize that me, you know, if others need to wait, um, then, then that's okay. But in my mind, um, there are still a lot of variables and we want to be able to, especially in our current funding situation, um, make sure that we have our arms around as best we can what the costs to, um, beef up these barriers are. Um, be- before we close the project. I am anxious to get those cost savings back to the homeowners, but they of course won't be paying us until we know what it is. And so, um, you know, we will see those savings, uh, but we just don't exactly know what they are yet.
Okay, I'm gonna object for purposes of a question. Um, what's our ceiling for, um, the LID though? We have a top number regardless, right? No matter what happens?
Correct. We cannot assess properties more than, I believe it's $6,300 per parcel, and that's based on a project budget of $7.8 million.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll start. Mr. Brooks, do you want to speak to your objection at all?
Yeah, I'm just worried that with the, um, implications of the Phase Two, everyone that's involved in the Phase One is going to feel like, uh, they have a unfair expenditure comparatively. I, I know that there's other factors that play into that, but, um, you know, I know that there was the, the, uh, four or five million re-appropriated from the Capital Civic Center. Is there anything left in there that can still be re-appropriate? Or how much is left that's unrestricted that could possibly be applied to this to make that financial impact less on the Phase One people that are subject to the lid?
Um, Madam Manager?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Those are the, um, funds that were re-appropriated for the Capital Civic Center were, uh, re-appropriated to go towards Phase Two. And, um, we do expect to have substantial cost for Phase Two, both in staffing, uh, technical assistance permitting. And, you know, we're gonna be owning and operating, maintaining these barriers. And we saw just with Phase One, a million dollars of, uh, damage to the barriers. All of that to say, there is no end of expenses to CBJ related to mitigating Glacier Lake Outburst flooding. So, uh, while I'm hopeful that, you know, it won't cost the, the full four million to do one year of work, I can pretty much guarantee you that by the time we come to an enduring solution, we, we will have spent that $4 million and more. Um, so the, I think the, the benefit of leaving the LID open is that you're not forced to make those decisions today. Or, you know, in, in the, before the, the 2026 GLOF, if that's the, the, the decision that you take, that you make.
Let's let Mr. Smith talk first, then it will come back to you. Mr. Smith? Are you speaking for?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll speak for the motion. Um, at one point even earlier today, I had been kind of thinking. Um, at one point even earlier today, I had been kind of thinking, let's close this out and get those folks some certainty. Hearing more, thinking about it more, I actually think leaving it open um, could potentially be more, actually provide some financial benefit to them, you know, depending on what we potentially happen with this, uh, you know, a service area or something. So that's why I would um, uh, support Man- Ms. Wall's motion to keep it open, because I, I, I hope that it actually may reduce the cost for these folks in the lid in the long term.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, Miss, so we'll go to Mr. Kelly first. Well, let people, I'm letting people talk that haven't talked, Mr. Brooks, sorry. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. I think I, uh, much for some, many of the same reasons as Mr. Smith, I will uh, support uh, this motion. I did have one concern, and so I think I'll just object for the purposes of a question. Um, so you mentioned that this will not be something that is recorded by the title company, but this will be a responsibility of the homeowner, just to avoid any confusion for people who are trying to sell, or for people who might be buying these homes. Um, if somebody is not specifically tuned in to this meeting and listening to us right now, um, is there going to be any work to inform people that they have this responsibility?
Madam Manager.
Um, we certainly will um, communicate with homeowners in the LID, uh, that the LID, you know, the timeline for closure of the LID, because, you know, we've gotten questions from homeowners who want to kind of button that up and are like, when are you guys going to begin our uh, assessing us? So after this meeting, we will communicate that to them. We can also communicate in that, you know, that if there's a transfer, it's, it's your responsibility to disclose that. When you uh, sell a house, uh, you, you fill out a very comprehensive disclosure form. And so that form and the realtor would also be legally responsible to prompt that.
Great. Uh, thank you. I'll withdraw my objection.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Brooks, do you have any to add?
Thank you. Um, by leaving the LID open, I know that it's for what's not um, anticipated, you know, to, to have a little bit of the grace. But what's the upper end of what you think you might need to collect for the unknown? And then also, how much is left in the Capital Civic Center CIP, and how much of that is unrestricted that can be applied to some of the costs that would be associated with the LID in Phase One?
I'd see, so to answer your first question, the maximum amount that we legally can charge each parcel is $6,300 based on a total project estimate of 7.8 million. So uh, that um, that's the ceiling. Uh, I think there's a lot of hope that we could come in under that. Um, but there's also a lot of unknowns, and in the end, it's really your decision how much you want to use taxpayer dollars versus uh, versus um, property owner dollars. So that is, it is that, what that number is, is really more up to you than up to uh, staff. All we can do is bring you the, the project costs. And then your second question about um, Capital Civic Center and um, funding. I, I don't recall off the top of my head how much restricted funding there is, and by restricted, I mean passenger fee appropriations. But there's $2 million in general fund uh, in that um, in that CIP account.
Thank you. I'll uh, sus- or sustain my objection.
All right, Madam Clerk, we have a motion with objection. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the motion to hold Phase One LID open for another GLOF season, Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Ms. Adkison?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Steininger?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Smith?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yays, one nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so the next um, recommendation is explore. We want, need to decide if we're going to explore a service area for future GLOF-related funding needs. Keyword is explore. So are we ready to deal with that tonight? If so, I'm going to look at Ms. Wall. I'll pick on her tonight. Will you make a motion?
Maybe I'll ask a question first. I mean, explores uh, broad term. I mean, I think this is a good thing to keep on the table. Um, but I've, I don't see it exploring it in the near future as a good idea. So maybe the question to staff is um, what timeframe are you asking us? To, what, what kind of direction do you need when?
Madam Manager.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was hoping to be able to bring you numbers today that was like the assessed value for a certain inundation zone equals this and one mil. And it, it became quite uh, quite confusing and difficult to be able to give you, you know, concrete information that would help you uh, in those decisions. So I think that what will be most useful for me is feedback on um, your um, you know, kind of timeline. I think how I envision the service area ideally would be to um, in the long term, uh, cover maintenance of the barriers, because that will be a reoccurring expenditure. Um, you could, you know, decide to, to, to do it in, in any different way. But I, I think that is how I would um, recommend using that mechanism, because it's not a, you know, it doesn't generate a huge amount of funding, even at like a full mil of extra property tax on, on, on those homes. Also, you know, gives it, uh, gives us more time when we're looking at maintenance versus construction. So um, I don't know that I need much feedback here today, except if you are like, no, let's look at using a service area as an, as an immediate option for uh, funding some of the um, GLOF mitigate, mitigation strategies.
I don't think we're there. So I would just say, the will of the body, and we can do this more formally, is just to keep that in our bag of tricks for later on down the line. Is that a good feeling for everybody? Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Thank, thank you. I think I am uh, interested in exploring the service area. I think it'd be um, good to look at that and then look at um, possible alternatives and how much of a lift um, each of these alternatives for, for funding our, our mitigation efforts uh, might be. I think it's going to be very important to bring the, the public along with this, because this does require a vote of the people. And so I think we um, should look at um, look at this as, as one, uh, we should explore this as, as one of the options, and look at the pros and cons of uh, this and various other options.
All right, so I guess the question I'm going to go back to is, do we want to deal with this tonight? Yay or nay? I'm gaining a mixed review, so. Mr. Kelly, try a motion, I guess, because I don't know that people want to decide that tonight.
Okay, I'll take a stab at a motion. Um, I move that the, that staff bring back to the committee of the whole options for funding future mitigation efforts that would include exploring a service area and include other options and the pros and cons of these options.
Any objection? Ms. Wall, you look perplexed.
Yeah, um, objection for a question um, to the maker of the motion. Or I think one of the um, differences that manager Kessler was trying to point out was the difference between like building the things and long-term maintenance. Or do you have a, are you giving direction on building the things?
I think I'm giving direction on, on both of those.
I guess I'll object just, um, I think this is a bit um, premature to have this conversation. I think we should leave it as an option. As we go through the budget process, we've got to talk about long-term, how we're going to keep this up, and I expect it'll come back to us at that point. So if this fails, I'm happy to take it into finance when it feels right.
Any further objection? Uh, Mr. Brooks, do you want to speak to your objection?
Yes, and just for those that are uh, tuning in or maybe um, tuning into their first meeting, um, uh, service area is leveraging uh, extra tax on people and in a disaster area. And I don't think it's a currently an appropriate time to be doing that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. All right, I will object off, object also a little bit what Ms. Wall says, but also just for staff time. I think this is a long-term solution rather than a short, short-term solution. So I don't think our staff needs to be dealing with this right now, especially as we're dealing with budget issues. So I'll object. So, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and objection. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the motion for staff to bring in a cow, options to fund future mitigation efforts, including exploring service areas. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Ms. Wall?
No.
Mr. Steininger?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Smith?
No.
Ms. Adkison?
No.
Madam Mayor?
No.
Motion fails. One yay, seven, seven nays. Nope. Apologies. Six nays.
Seven, you're right. He's up there.
Seven.
There you go. Okay, so uh, still keeping that further down the road perhaps. Um, and then this one's a little simpler, so um, Ms. Wall, we'll go to you again.
Um, I move that we direct staff to request a waiver for the 25% local match for the NRCS buyout program and ask for unanimous consent.
So I'm assuming that's if we apply. Don't we have to apply first? Jeff, for purposes of a question, I'll do this right. Do we have to apply first?
So from what I understand, we have applied, which is why NRCS has set aside the funding for us. So um, what we haven't done is signed an agreement.
Okay. So, thank you for that. All right. Back to Ms. Wall's uh, motion, asking for unanimous consent. Any objection? Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you. If I could just get the motion restated, please?
By me?
Yeah.
Uh, sure.
I move that we direct staff to request a waiver for the 25% local match for the NRCS buyout program and ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. Madam Manager, do you need any other direction tonight?
No, thank you so much for your time and attention.
All right, is there anything further from staff? Oh, we did have a question. Whoops, I'm sorry. That was asked of email, and I almost forgot it. Um, and I, I looked at you and realized you hadn't talked yet. So one of the questions on email was, how are we going to address the storm drains that water came out of? Is there a way to address that, I should just ask?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think as was stated earlier, uh, while the HESCO barriers were largely suc- successful and they worked as designed uh, for the area that was designed to be protected by Phase One and One A. I know there are two different uh, levels of concerns. There's concerns about the storm drains themselves, and there is also concern about uh, se- uh, seepage through the, through the barriers. So for uh, the CBJ-owned storm sewer system, we had installed uh, eight different one-way valves uh, prior to the 2024 GLOF. Uh, that was in the area of uh, Marion Drive all the way down to Meander. Uh, then uh, prior to the 2025 GLOF, uh, we continued uh, kind of marching down uh, river and installed, I think it was about five more uh, one-way valves uh, down through the Diamond Park area. Um, ju- also just in terms of moving water, uh, the HESCO barriers themselves had a series of uh, of, of pipes through them. They had their own one-way valves uh, in them, so they were designed so that uh, the wet side of uh, the barrier when, when they were wet, that they didn't, they didn't send water to the, to the other side. Um, but there was also, as we all know, uh, there was some, some seepage, especially down in the Meander area. Um, that is something that we are definitely looking at in terms of uh, when we're doing this uh, fortification and reconstruction of the Phase One portion. We also have been talking about a deployment strategy for pumps, uh, both with our own pumps and any pumps that we can get uh, through the generous uh, Army Corps um, offer to provide pumps and try to uh, pre-position pumps in various locations. We did that uh, when we had the September, kind of much, much smaller GLOF, but we're trying to learn from that August experience. Uh, and as we're talking about Phase Two, we are also aware that we'd have to think about areas. Uh, we would, of course, still have um, pipes through the HESCO barriers with the one-way valves and think about a strategy for uh, how to release any water that does wind up coming through the barriers. That will very much be part of that, that design process for Phase Two.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions for Ms. Koch? Seeing none and nothing further from staff, correct? We are, thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining us. We are adjourned.